Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Charles Melton is here. He's the pastor at May Ridge Baptist Church. He'll be leading us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Salyer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But everyone, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we stand in awe as we stand here before you. And we just thank you, Father, that you're here. We asked it for your guidance. We ask for your wisdom and your knowledge. And Lord, thank you for these men and women who have come to serve you and serve this great city. And I ask God that you just bless them in a very special way as they seek your direction. And Lord, I know they seek you because they put you at the top of the agenda for today. And I honor them and I honor you today. May you just lead each member who has a part in today's business. And Lord, that your blessings will be poured out upon each one and upon this city. Continue to grow it as you have in the past. Continue to give great leadership and the ability for them to listen to you, Lord, as you lead them to do what you called them to do. For we pray and we ask it in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We'll call the meeting to order. Our first item is a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion. Have a second? All right. Comments or questions on item three? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item four A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 16th. And item B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for August 2nd and August 9th. Have a second? All right. Cast your votes on item four. Passed unanimously. That moves us to item five, which requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, starting on page 18, under item 8A4, 8A4, that's PUD 1444, the applicant requests that this item be deferred until the October 4th meeting. And again, that's 8A3, PUD 1444. That's in Ward 7. Councilman Kelly.
And that's been delayed until when?
October 4th. And then on page 20, under item 8I1, item C, 3306 South Quapaw, where it said that be stricken, the owner has repaired. On page 21, item J, 9,009 Northwest 10th Street, where it said that be stricken, the owner has removed. And then under item 8J1A6309 Ashby Terrace, where it said that be stricken, the owner has secured. That's all this morning.
All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right. Moving on to the council agenda. We'll convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority.
Mayor, I have asked Tim Johnson to come this morning and give us a brief presentation out of item A. Those are some proposed improvements. We're actually, this has been on the drawing boards for a long time. It's funded in the '07 bond issue. And this is to actually extend the river up under the new I-40 through a bridge that's been constructed there. And it will provide a connection from Bricktown and the canal area, a pedestrian connection down through this area and down to the river. It's very difficult right now to walk from Bricktown down to the activities at the river. And so with that, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Tim Johnson. With Johnson and Associates, we've had the privilege to be selected to do the design on this last link connecting the river and the canals, Mr. Couch has mentioned. Also on our team is Howard Site Design or Howard Fairbairn Site Design. They're helping us with the landscape portion of the design work. On the project location, as Mr. Couch mentioned, there's been a bridge constructed as part of the I-40 realignment, and that bridge is in place. And we will be utilizing that to extend the river at the river elevation up under the bridge and put a turning basin in, in the area that's being highlighted there. The final connection of the canal, the river area, been made through an existing bridge that's been constructed as part of the I-40 realignment. And we have to deal with a 19-foot vertical elevation change. And I don't know if many of you recall back when we were designing the canal itself, we opted to raise that southern end to match the northern end of the canal to make the boat ride longer. And that created this bigger change in elevation. And the fortunate thing here is that the plans changed. And instead of having an at-grade crossing at the railroad track, we now have a bridge under the highway and the railroad. So this is quite an enhancement over the original concept. And this pedestrian connection will allow for the Bricktown Entertainment District to have a physical pedestrian connection as well as an opportunity to embark on a river cruise from a canal boat or vice versa. We're going to, and I'll show you here in a minute, we're going to provide a ticket booth area so you can actually get on either boat, canal, or river. This is an overall view of the project. Up on the north end, you can see the red switchback looking area. That's a water feature we're proposing. It's also a walkway. It is not a, it's at a grade that does not, it's not as steep as a ramp would be. So it's just considered a walkway. So it won't have railing requirements and things like that. It is rather long, and we're doing that in case we don't have enough money to build the elevator at this time. We are putting into the project that an elevator with stairs as an alternate bid. You know, but from a maintenance standpoint, this would be, without an elevator, would be a better solution in the long run if we get at least the walkway in. There's a second connection over on the east side that connects you to the existing parking area south of the Bass Pro and in front of the statues. The areas on the north also will focus on a landscape venue that will take your view and take it into the existing land-run statues as well as when you look from the river elevation up towards the canal end, that water feature will be an attraction with lights and moving water as you walk down that path. On the southern end, we'll be connecting to the existing turnaround area and going under a pedestrian bridge that will maintain the link on the existing hiker-biker trail that goes around there. And then we're also coming around to take it up under the bridge. There'll be lighting and a lot of landscaping. We're proposing a retaining wall on the southwest, I'm sorry, southeast side. That will also be backdrop with landscaping that'll block the view of any future vehicle in that parking area. As a second alternative to the bids, we're also including another water feature at that corner so that it gives you something to look at as you're coming through the bridge. So the vertical transformation, we want it to feel easy, provide for a draw for the traveling, leaving the river and entering the entertainment district or vice versa.
Tim, why don't you point out also whether this is even a better shot, the location of the land-run sculpture? How close it is to--
Right. The next slide shows the land-run sculpture as it's presently laid out. Obviously, not all those pieces are in place yet, but a good number of them are. You can kind of get a visual of the size of the canal boats versus the Devon boats. And so the objective here would be to attract a canal boat rider to exit the canal boats, walk down the water feature to a second ticket booth, and get on a river cruise and take the river ride either back and forth or out to Meridian.
Tim, could I ask just a quick question--
Yes, ma'am.
--with regard to the elevator and the add alternate bid? Are you planning on putting in the stairs, whether or not you put the elevator in or are they connected?
We are working on that with the building department right now. We're afraid there may be some ADA issues there. If we can, we're going to put the stairs in without, even if the elevator's not built.
Okay.
There's an equal access question that we're asking the building department to help us analyze.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the elevator an issue of ADA?
You're not required to have the elevator as long as you have a walkway that's equal access. So our walkway is not necessarily a ramp, it's just a walkway. And so that would provide equal access for both able-bodied and disabled people. So the elevator's not mandatory. It's just an added feature that would be an enhancement. Just highlighting the few things that we're looking at, the pedestrian connection with the integrated water feature. We're looking at a lot of lighting there as well. Go ahead, let me see. The grass-sloped area that shows, looks like a little ampliator there. We're anticipating that to be a gentle slope that could be sat on, enjoy the sunshine and, you know, that would be just a nice place to hang out at lunch or any other time. The existing land-run statues will be focused on, the alternator, elevator, and stairs as we mentioned. And also the secondary access to the parking area. And then the last thing would be lighting entering the boathouse row. So we're trying to play up the lighting entering the bridge. There'll be a lot of lighting in throughout the bridge for both daytime and nighttime lighting because it's a very long bridge to travel under. It's going to be dark in there both daytime and nighttime. And on the south side, highlighting those features that I mentioned, the pedestrian bridge to maintain the current trail system. And signage in the Bricktown, same kind of thing. So it gives you an opening as, like the bridge, Reno Bridge, under railroad tracks, the signs says Bricktown. People know where they're going. The alternate water feature to enhance the turning area gives you something to look at every time you turn a corner. And then the special lighting on the bridge that I just mentioned. And that's my brief presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Tim?
Quick question. What's the approximate timing, Tim?
We are slated to finish our plans, final plans, at the end of September. And the objective would be to try to bid this out late this fall.
How long will the construction take?
It'll be scheduled with the river activities. So there may be some start-stop, but anticipated about a six-month construction time.
When you said the water feature, what is that going to entail or what's the plans for to look like?
Thanks for asking. As you walk down the path, we're anticipating to have water features on both sides of the path so that as you're walking at this gentle slope, the water's traveling with you. So it'll be running down these runnels and then turning and going under the next runnel. And as you turn the corner and walk down further, the water just continues to flow with you. And we're going to intermix with that some landscaping edges and some water plants. Nothing real tall in there because we want the water to be seen from the river as you look up. So it'll look like a seesaw coming down. And as you're walking, the water's moving with you.
Tim, would that be a similar feel to the Mary Gardens, the runnels as you walk down the--
Yes.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Tim? Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One other comment.
All right.
The issue of the elevator--
Yes, sir.
The fact that there won't be anyone, there's not a staff or any personnel that's going to be around this particular area, do you think that could cause some safety concerns as it relates to the elevator when it's not operating properly? Or on the other hand, some of the other issues of people who may take advantage of the elevator for other purposes?
That is a concern. We've been working with the Parks Department, and our anticipated design for this elevator would be more like what the renovation that was done at the Mary Gardens. We have a scheduled operational time for that elevator. It can be locked off. If there's an event, it can be opened up. And so it's much more controlled than, say, the elevators that are on the canal now that are very open-air. They're operational all the time. And there's been some maintenance issues with those open-air type elevators. So we're going to make this more enclosed, and it'll be able to be locked down.
Tim, are there two elevators now on the existing canal?
Yes.
All right. Tim, thanks.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the MFA? Ready to vote? All right. Cast your votes. MFA passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convening as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the two items consisting of the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convening as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are two items. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the EAT? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, Alpha Quebec and Alpha Victor.
All right. Yeah, Larry?
Bravo, Alpha BA, please, Your Honor.
Pat, you want to get us started with AQ?
Thank you, Your Honor. This one deals with the acceptance report on investment portfolio. And I have no problems with the portfolio, the way it's been managed and the comments made here, except I did have a question on the fact that we're still investing money from the bond funds of 1964, 94, 98, 97, pardon me, it was, 94, 96, 97, 98, 99. Seems like it's a long time to have money left over in those bond funds. Can't we clear them out somehow?
We are in the process of doing that. It's a focus of our area, and I can promise you there are very little funds left in--
There's no funds, but there are accounting issues.
Yeah. And we are in the process of addressing them.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. And AV, Pat?
AV, Your Honor, is a sort of routine purchase of some property for the downtown park. And it's a small parcel. What got my attention was the appraised value was $28,000, and the purchase price was over $50,000. I understand appraisals are difficult to do in that area because of the increase in value that's going on. That seemed like that's sort of a steep difference. Is there a specific reason why we paid that much for it?
Eric, do you hear that whole question? Can you answer that?
To repeat the question, just between the appraised value and--
The appraised value, Eric, was $28,000, and that actual purchase price was $50,000 plus.
One of the items that we're actually seeing on the MAPS 3 Park on the appraised value and the difference is that we're actually paying relocation expenses on many of these parcels, and so that's in addition to the appraised value?
But the other projects listed relocation expenses as a specific item, line item. This one didn't. This one says the purchase price was $50,000.
And in the other cases, it's simply just a negotiated settlement to avoid any condemnation proceedings. And so we're finding in most cases that we find that the negotiated value would be less than what we would go through if we went and applied to the courts and went through the process. And so in a lot of cases, we're receiving recommendations to purchase those properties at negotiated values versus applying to the courts.
What's our limit, our guideline for negotiate, I mean, for condemnation? Twice the value, three times the value, whatever? Do we have a benchmarking?
We don't. It's actually parcel by parcel, we're considering them individually as we go through each of the park parcels. So in this case, it's simply just a recommendation from staff that we proceed at the negotiated value. We do feel on this particular parcel that it's of value to us to do this today.
It's a relatively small amount of money, but it's the principle. It's not the money, it's the principle of things. It seems like that we need to be really careful that we don't get a reputation for overpaying in this area just because we're the city. There's a land acquirer in Oklahoma City who's got a reputation for buying property regardless of the cost. I don't think we ought to fall in that category at all because we're dealing with the citizens' money, not our own. And so it's a little different there.
And I think you'll find we are due diligent, and I think that'll be highlighted this morning as we discuss the property acquisition in executive session. I think you'll see some of that.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? Larry, you wanted to talk about BA?
Yes. BA is a resolution approving a lease agreement for vehicle storage for the police's nuisance abatement program. That program has been in effect for several years. The main vehicles that are being, I think, compounded come from drive-by shootings and also from people who flee the police. And I wonder if Bill City could come forward and just give us a little update on how those programs are going and how many vehicles we have impounded out there.
You know, for the last 30 months, I think the number of vehicles is about, we've impounded, just based on pursuits, is about 235. And they're held for a number of days to abate, you know, their use in other types of crimes and other pursuits in the future. We also have sent out quite a few letters. I think there's probably over 35 different investigations on businesses and residents involved in narcotic sales and things like that through the nuisance abatement program. But the storage facility itself that you're looking at today is a lease that we've had to be able to store our vehicles that we do impound as a result of being involved in pursuits or drive-by shootings.
Has that nuisance abatement helped in having an impact to negate some of that drive-by shooting and fleeing activity?
Well, over the last three years, our drive-by's has gone down. And I can't tell you specifically if that contributed to it or some of the other efforts, but I'd probably have to say it's a combination of both.
All right. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket before we vote? All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrents docket. All right. It's like we have 16 items on the concurrents docket. Any comments or questions on any of these? We're ready to go. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Move on to item A. These are items that require a separate vote. We start with a couple of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 4 at 8,002 Southeast 74th Street. It's a planned unit development. It would become an R1 single-family residential district. Pete, you okay with this?
Yes. It had the unanimous approval of the planning commission despite a negative recommendation. However, this is an area that's kind of transitional there, and so I'm going to concur with it. Unless there are people who want to speak in opposition, I'd be glad to listen to that before we vote.
Anybody here wishing to speak on item 8A1? All right. Looks like you're good to go.
I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is also in Ward 4. It's a zoning case at 6600 Southeast 74th Street. It's I-2 moderate industrial airport environs district, and it would become an R4 general residential AE2 airport environs district.
This has some similar concerns to the previous case. It had a negative recommendation, but it did pass unanimously from the planning commission. It's an interesting tract of land that is bordered on the west by Air Depot and on the east by, excuse me, on the east by Air Depot. And on the west, the entire tract is, it goes all the way to Sooner. It doesn't have access directly to 240 and doesn't have access north to the railroad track. It's just a strip of land there that, it doesn't meet the plan specifications that they were written out. I believe it was almost ignored in that process because it doesn't fit exactly with all the other things that are said about what should go on there. I'm willing to, I'm ready to move approval. If there are people here to speak in opposition, though, I'd be glad to hear them.
All right. Anybody here wishing to speak on item 8A2? All right. Looks like you're good to go.
I move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A3, I believe, has been deferred until October 14th. Is that right, Skip? Is that what we said? All right. Move us to item 8A4, which is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 14313 North MacArthur Boulevard. It's a planned unit development and would be a simplified planned unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a columbarium. I found out it's a place to store people who have decided cremation is a solution for their last step. And it's inside an existing building. I had no comments, negative comments whatsoever. And if there's anybody here willing to talk about it, I would be delighted to hear that. If there aren't, I would move for approval.
Okay. Do we have a second? All right. We're voting on item 8A4. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B is closing a utility easement in Ward 8. Pat, you okay with this?
Yes, Your Honor. This was one that the city had some issues with, and they have been resolved now. I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is an item that we've been discussing for quite a length of time, especially at the council level. This is the redrawing of the ward lines. Appropriate to do so every 10 years after the census allows us the opportunity to look at the demographic shifts in our city and how the city may have changed over the last 10 years. We've held an open meeting, and I know the council has had a lot of input into how the lines are drawn. I would say fundamentally, we haven't changed the lines a whole lot. The lines look very similar. I think Ward 1 kind of returned to the way it looked 10 years ago with Suri Hills returning to Ward 1 and bringing in some of the rural areas. Ward 8 has expanded so greatly in population--
Ward 8 became a donor ward this time.
Yeah. Ward 8 is hemorrhaging people in this drive. And it'll be interesting to see how it changes over the next 10 years. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on the redistricting process or the numbers that are presented to us today? All right. I've got comments from council. Are we ready to go on this?
Mayor, I'd move approval, but I'd like to make a couple of comments in that--
We'll let you do that. All right. Pat, Pete wants to make a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Now, Pete, what do you want to say?
First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the work that went into redrafting the lines. It was, to some extent, it was a relatively easy process in that despite the fact there have been a lot of people, the wards have changed in terms of their relative sizes, the process, it wasn't that difficult in order to try to keep them as compact as possible with this little finigling really with the process. It was relatively easy to do that. I do think that we really did not give an adequate look at the 10-ward thing. I wanted to move approval because I wanted to be, show some solidarity with the rest of the council. This is what the council's decided. There weren't votes to do the 10-wards. But I would like to ask you to appoint a small committee. The charter permits us to redraw the ward lines at any time. We don't have to wait 10 years. We can do it two years from now or three years from now. I would like to see us, take us a long, hard look at just whether or not going to 10-wards makes sense. I think it's a talk worth having, and I think we ought to take a look at it.
I agree with Councilman White, with one exception, a minor exception. I think we ought to look at additional wards. If 10's the right number, then we could settle on 10. If 12's the right number, we could settle on 10. Considerably, we can go backwards if this group is totally independent and unbiased from the starting point. And I think they should be. But I have, I want to support the idea of Councilman White, that if we're going to do something like this, we need to do it very deliberately, try to anticipate some of the unintended consequences that always seem to flow from our actions up here. I know we can't look at them all, but if we step back and take a good, hard look at this from a lot of different standpoints, the cost of it, how is it going to impact our citizens? Is it positive? Do we need to do it? Is there a reason for doing it? And I think it's something that we need to study. But it needs to be a very deliberate, an unbiased study to start with.
One of the reasons I'd like to ask for it now is that we have fresh data now. It will be, if we go forward a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, it'll be much more difficult to get as accurate, as fresh a data as we have today from the census. So this would be a good time to look at it in a longer period. And it really takes only a process similar to the one we went through, a couple of public hearings. And I mean, if we come to a conclusion, it's not, we don't have to go to the vote of the people, it's not extra outside the charter. It's not been done, but the charter provides for the possibility of doing that. I think it may have been done sometime in the past, but mid--
Yeah. When we went from four to eight, I guess I'd like to know what the circumstances were then.
We actually went from four to eight wards, but we didn't change the number of councilmen. We just went from four to eight wards. We had--
I see. There were two council people representing four wards.
And actually, they weren't even balanced geographically at that time. I mean, by population. It was just kind of a four quadrant kind of a thing. And there were two people elected from each ward. The one-man-one-vote stuff didn't really come alive until about 1960, a little after that.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, I'd be glad to figure out a way we can address it more thoroughly and discuss and discuss it at the council level. Yes, Skip?
Yeah, I would like to commend Councilman White in reference to his leadership of addressing that issue. And the more and more we looked at it, each time I looked at the proposed boundaries, it really becomes more representative of what we have in Oklahoma City as a whole. And it was interesting that this morning, The Daily Oklahoman made a very, you know, good comment about the fact of us discussing, you know, the different wards of going to ten and reflected back historically, when Mayor Humphrey was here, of some of the plans that he addressed during that period of time to be more inclusive of the total balance of the population in Oklahoma City. So, you know, I think this is something, and I said the same thing when we had the public hearing, that it's not going to go away. And I think as policymakers and leaders for this city, we need to be out in the forefront to look at this issue and address it as it is. And it's the reality of the population, it's the reality of the culture, it's the reality of the demographics of Oklahoma City as a whole. And I would like to see, before I leave at some point in time on this earth, that this city council looks to some degree like that.
Any other comments or questions on the redistricting process? Are we ready to vote? All right, sounds like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight D is another item that we've seen before. This will be the final vote and final hearing. This is on the shodding of animals down in Bricktown. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, looks like we're good to go. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight E is a couple of traffic commission items. The first is one-way street issues in Ward three. Larry, you all right with this? You got a motion? All right, cast your votes on item eight E1. Passed unanimously. And a similar issue, Pat, in Ward eight, some no parking anytime signs.
I have no problem with this, but I would caution the people out there that this may not solve their problem. In my experience, the no parking zones in a residential area come back to bite you. So this is not a solution, but I keep, there's no reason not to do it and try and see if it works here. So I'm moving to move this forward.
All right, we're voting on item eight E2. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight F is a public hearing. This is the second time we've had a chance to review the issues in changing the rates on our solid waste, and Marsha's here to answer any questions.
Councilman McAtee asked if Marsha could come back and highlight some of the points of their presentation last week. There were some comments, I think, that Mr. McAtee got over the last week or two on a couple of points and some questions about our natural gas commitment, what we're trying to do in that area, and if, you know, is that what's driving the rate increase, and it is not. But Marsha's going to touch base on that and also how the rates compare with other cities in the metro area. And then I know that we had some follow-up information. We got to Councilman Shadid and some follow-up information. We got to Councilman White.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be with you. Joining me is Debbie Reagan, helping me through the electronic process. Previously identified services we provide, the rate proposal and what's included in the rate proposal. Just as a reminder, we provide service in the entire metropolitan area with city crews collecting in the dark tan area shown on your map and contractors collecting in the remainder of the city. We're very pleased to provide services that are popular with our customers, that customers are pleased about, and working on the same model that we've used since 1994, but have made progressive improvements to that program. We do provide a variety of services with the funds that OC generates through its rates and fees, including storm debris collection, collection of freon-based appliances, street-sweeping and illegal dumping collection, among the things that are provided as an enhancement to our ratepayers. The capital plan accomplishes stability of funds, pardon me, pardon me. The rate plan accomplishes stability of funds, including ninety days' working capital, more than a two-times coverage ratio for the debt. It anticipates increases in the total number of customers by about one and a half percent a year, which is our historical average. It also increases, it also anticipates price increases that are generally tied to heavy equipment pricing, heavy equipment utilization, such as landfill operations, which are highly dependent on complex heavy equipment, as well as fossil fuels. And again, finally, it does fund purchases of equipment for the city's side of solid waste operations and provides some debt financing for a CNG fueling facility. Rate increases are sixty cents a month for residential customers. An additional cart will cost you ten cents more a month. Bulky waste, additional bulky waste, which is the price we bill customers who have set out more than four cubic yards of bulky waste in a month, goes up by thirty-one cents. This is actually rarely used. We bill a total of around $2,000 a month in additional bulky waste fees. Again, commercial prices go up three and a half percent. We polled thirteen other communities who are our peers in many respects, and we look at service levels they provide versus the service level we provide. Oklahoma City, in this rate plan, would go from the fourth lowest of the fourteen total to the fifth lowest of the fourteen total. We're excited about the purchase of compressed natural gas-fueled vehicles. We began, we began a pilot program in 2009. We frankly were doing it because we thought it was the right policy discussion to bring to you, not because staff were necessarily advocates for that program. What we have discovered is CNG works for us in this collection system. The CNG trucks are more expensive, but they have a lower operating cost. We've been paying about $50 a fuel up for CNG trucks compared to $134 a fuel up for our diesel-fueled vehicles. It is literally that simple. We do regularly replace equipment. There are some advantages that we've looked at, but again, the replacement program is based on how many trucks we need to collect trash every week, how many trucks we need to collect bulky waste on a timely basis. And in this case, this fuel model is going to work for us. The plan also includes, something you will be paying for with the rates, is a long-term disposal plan. It's our next effort to improve solid waste, but to plan for your future, making certain we have disposal plans and alternatives developed for the landfill space that we have available. And happy to answer questions from.
Just a brief question. Marsha, on your pricing thing, you had a list of assumptions that you made indicate what we need to collect. If, for instance, inflation, if we didn't come in at four percent and it came in at two percent, would we have the authority at city council level to delay some of these increases in future years?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Last year, there was no solid waste rate increase because in the 2008 economic changes, some of our costs ameliorated, so we were able to avoid a rate increase for a full year.
We have that flexibility to adjust.
Absolutely.
Obviously, the opposite side is true also.
It would have to be an ordinance change, just like we have an ordinance change now, but we certainly have the ability to come in and, gosh, those increases didn't affect until, you know, instead of a, you know, we can do a half percent less rate increase or something like that. Yes, we do have.
You know, the increase is relatively small, and I think we're providing Cadillac service in this area with the systems we have in place. So I think it's well worth what we're charging, but I did want to make sure that everybody understood we had the option as we go forward to respond to changes in the economic situation.
And it would be an appropriate time to do that each year through the budget process. Okay, this is what the rate increase we had, and this is what we're looking for, this year's expenses, how does that match up? That would be a great discussion.
As long as that mechanism's in place, I'm perfectly comfortable with what we're going.
Yeah, Larry?
Yeah, can we go back, Marsha, to the slide that showed the sixty cents increase to seven twenty?
Yes, sir.
Right there, okay. What this is projecting, and make sure that I'm going to write track here. First off, all of the, all the fees, all the expenses of providing the service, as Pat said, if you want to call it Cadillac service, that all has to come from the fees that we are charged for our own, our own waste removal.
Yes, sir. Solid waste is completely supported by customer service charges. There are no other income. We pursue grants from time to time, but there's no city income submitted for solid waste service.
There's no general fund dollars involved in this.
Exactly, okay. I just want to make sure of that point. Now, on this chart right here, it shows that a residential customer in the proposed increase will go to seventeen dollars and eighty cents a month in year 2011. That goes out to twenty dollars and forty-two cents in year 2015 if there are no changes needed. And what I heard, everybody says that in the annual budget process, we're going to review this, and if the inflation assumptions do not materialize, the inflation actually is less or the costs are less, then there could be the potential through an ordinance change of rolling this back.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This rate structure was based on a study done by a consulting company that we hired. Is that true?
Yes. OC's financial advisor, who's also Oqot's financial advisor and the council's PFM, did our plan for us.
And so PFM looked at all the variables, all our projected expenses, the goals that we have to have for debt reduction, for working capital, for replacement, et cetera, and they're the ones that brought this recommendation to us.
Yes, sir, they did.
Okay. Now, on the replacement for the vehicles that are going to be replaced, do you have any idea, or can you get me an idea, of how many we're talking about over this period of time? Because we are not just going to go out in one swell soup and change every vehicle that we have to natural gas. It's going to be on, as the vehicle retires in effect, its useful service, and the new vehicle would have natural gas. Is that correct?
Yes. This applies only to the, only to the vehicles we use for your weekly trash collection. We have not found the same price differential or cost savings in our other vehicles. We are looking today just at the trucks we use for weekly collection. In those cases, we buy between five and six trucks a year. So we will be gradually, over time, we anticipate that we will change out to CNG. Again, depending upon the long-term economics, it'll be something we watch very closely to make certain that we're buying the most cost-competitive truck for our ratepayers.
What we're anticipating is that even though the cost of the vehicle is more than the cost of a current type of vehicle that we have, over the lifetime of the natural gas truck vehicle, that cost will be eaten up, in effect, by savings in the fuel cost. And so it's a better deal to buy the natural gas vehicle as opposed to the way we're currently going.
Yes, sir. The payback time is about three and a half years for the additional cost of $43,000 that it costs for a CNG engine compared to a diesel engine. Again, the fueling costs are so remarkably different today, and we anticipate that they will continue to be remarkably different through the life of the vehicles, which is about five years.
With Mr. McAtee, it's important to point out that even though it's a good business decision, there are other intangible benefits of that. It's being quieter in the neighborhoods, it's less wear and tear on our employees who are working in that environment all day, and more importantly, the air quality, positive air quality aspects that are brought out with the CNG vehicles.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The reason these questions came up, there was a group of citizens who were, of my age, if you will, that are all on fixed incomes, and they were quite concerned that we've had a water increase in the past, which we're not talking about today. Our utility, OG&E, is coming before the commission to raise their rates, and their question was, when does it stop? And how do we, who are on fixed incomes, how are we expected to make do? And so I wanted to get the economics out to assure the people that, hey, this is a good deal. It's the best deal, I think, we've got if we want to maintain the Cadillac service that we have. The only other option we have, correct me if I'm wrong, is to change the type of service that we're supplying our citizens. Going to every two-week pickup instead of every one-week pickup would obviously reduce our cost.
Yes.
But it would have a definite negative impact on our quality of life.
Yes. And we will be bringing you, again, as a part of our continuous improvement program that is very tied to cost of doing business, additional options, looking at your long-term future for solid waste disposal, and beginning the next round of improvement, improvements in policy discussions.
Just one other question. The going to natural gas and the CNG station, is the CNG station just intended to fuel the vehicles for waste removal, or will other city vehicles also be availing themselves at that same station?
We expect to put the station at 115th and Portland, where we do have solid waste vehicles, and we expect other city vehicles to be able to use it. It does not look like we have enough space to make it a commercial facility, but that's something designers will look at.
Well, now, if other city vehicles are using it, will those other departments be charged back for some of the construction costs and the bond cost for that facility?
We always charge for the cost of providing the service, so yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your indulgence.
Any other comments, comments or questions on item eight F? Yeah, Skip?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Sorry?
I'm going to have to get a little faster with this button and wave my hand at you or some kind of way. You need to look down this way a little bit more. You kind of ignore.
There's a reason I never look down.
But, Marsha, I would like to say, last week, the last presentation you made, and I made a comment about some of the people that I have witnessed in reference to the way they have just taken advantage or abused the system as far as the bulky waste. But with that, my comment is, I think your department do a fantastic job with this program. There's a lot of us, a lot of citizens never use and take advantage of the bulky waste days, and there's some people, I think, that just take total abuse of it. But, you know, in all in all, I know that these figures, a lot of people, and I've gotten some of the calls that Councilman McAtee was referring to in reference to some of the senior citizens and the cost factor, but again, you know, at some point in time, they're going to need those same services when there is an unfortunate occurrence at their property and they can't afford to have somebody to move it, and they pile it outside, and the city's going to pick it up. So I think we have a very good service, and I was looking at those rates compared to other cities, and I mean, it's almost like we're giving ours away compared to some of the other cities. So my comment is a compliment to you and your staff, and, you know, it's, it is what it is. Sometimes you just kind of, you know, add a little bit more in order to provide a good and better service, and I think you all are doing a great job.
Thank you, Councilman White. Very pleased to tell the people who really do the work.
Well, we do need to vote on item eight F in this public hearing. Have a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On item eight G, Police Chief Bill Citi is here to lead us into a presentation. This item is being introduced for public hearing.
When it comes to liquor and low-point beer laws, I have my backup here, my expert, if there's any details, because it becomes very complicated. But I know that Municipal Counselor Oliver Jones and Lieutenant Doug Kilmer have worked on this ordinance to make some changes to align our current ordinances with those of state law. Over the past fifteen years, state law has changed in reference to low-point, in reference to low-point beer, there are liquor laws and low-point beer. This ordinance only addresses low-point beer. It has nothing to do with liquor. That means anything under six-point. The things that are sold in package stores like convenience stores and grocery stores is low-point beer. It's below six-point, so that's what it addresses. Basically, what it does is the ordinance creates eight classifications. Currently, the ordinance has two classifications that covers eight classifications in state law. So it was very difficult to enforce, very difficult to understand, just based on the fact that we had two classifications that pretty much covered eight different classifications in state law. This, what it does is it creates eight classifications in our city ordinance that mirrors or that is in line with what state law is so that we can enforce those laws more easily and accurately and interpret those laws. And it ranges everywhere from the licensing, the classes for licensing for package stores, which handle sales of low-point beer for consumption off the premises. They can't, they can't drink it on the premises. It has special licenses for restaurants that serve low-point beer that do not make up the majority of their revenue for that establishment. It has licenses, specific licenses, that may address dance hall-type scenarios that where their main, their main profits are not from low-point beer, but they do serve it. So there's a variety, a wide variety of licensing that is addressed in state law that now we're bringing our ordinances up to those same types of standards. And if you have any specific questions, I'll probably rely on my lieutenant, who knows the specific answers to all those classes.
Chief, will this prohibit the type of settings where you have different sections in a establishment that under twenty-one can purchase beer, but you can still be in there for, say, some of these party events?
It will not, because state law still provides for certain sections, for certain sections for people over twenty-one, where they may serve low-point beer, but also serve alcohol, for those sections to be only for those people over twenty-one, so they will not address what you're talking about. Because state law still provides for that, and we have to be in line with state law.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yeah, Pat?
Chief, on the state law underage possession of low-point beers prohibited in any public place.
Yes.
Does that have the possibility of lapping over to any possession, whether you're above or below the age limit?
No. I mean, you could actually have low-point beer if you're over twenty-one in a public place.
So we could, if we picnic it like Hefner, as long as my grandkids don't drink it, it's okay?
You're safe.
Okay, thank you.
Well, someone from legal, Chief, so we can get you off the hot seat.
I'm okay. I'm glad, if I can, I'll defer to them.
Well, this provision that states that it removes a redundant provision regarding persons under the age of 21 being on the premises of a place that sells low-point beer. So Section 520 is amended to prohibit persons under 21 from being on the premises of a business with a Class 8 license to sell low-point beer. What's the Class 8 license?
I'll let Doug explain that. My lieutenant, who...
Okay.
Good morning. A Class 8 license, sir, is a license that is a bar. It's what you would think of in Bricktown. So any of the establishments that are posted at the door, 21 would receive a Class 8 license from the city of Oklahoma City. Generally, in that venue in Bricktown, they're posted 21 at the door because they sell alcohol. That's how they're licensed by the ABLE Commission. Their main purpose is the sale of alcohol. Everything else is incidental to that. So that would be a Class 8 license. And our ordinance would now be aligned with state law that says if they are a Class 8 establishment, or an establishment who relies solely on the sale of low-point beer for their income, that a person under 21 could not go in there and be a patron.
How are we going to educate folks about these changes? And how are we going to make the process customer-friendly, easy for people to come and get these licenses?
Every year, the establishments are required to get a new city license at the development center. As this were to be phased in, when the establishment owner went in to get their new license, they will fill out an application. In that application, they will self-declare what type of establishment they are. So there's no audit. We remove the need for us to try to do an audit to figure out what kind of establishment they are. They will self-declare. So an individual that has a bar in Bricktown would self-declare them as a bar, and sells as a bar. That's the type of license they would be issued. And then on that license, it would actually say who can be in that particular establishment. It will actually be printed on the license, so law enforcement can go in and tell just by looking at the license who is allowed to be on the premises.
Some of these require a certain amount of food to be sold, or that a certain percentage of their revenue will come from or not come from low-point beer sales? And how are we gonna...
They will declare that themselves. So if they declare themselves a restaurant, and then they attempt to operate as a bar, we don't have to do an audit because they told us they were a restaurant. So it would help negate the need for that type of audit.
So if an establishment opened up and 60% of their sales is more than likely alcoholic beverages, and 40% is some type of food items, under that scenario, you could have an 18-year-old or 21-year-old on the premises because they do sell some food? Is that correct?
Well, when you say alcohol, that falls back on the ABLE Commission. So the half-right answer would be, no, no one under 21 could be on there, because more than likely, the ABLE Commission would have posted that business 21 at the door, because their alcohol sales exceeds their food sales. If they don't have an alcohol, if they are not licensed by the ABLE Commission, and the ABLE Commission does not have jurisdiction, like your neighborhood bar that just sells 3-2 beer, that's where the Class 8 license would be the overriding factor. And that would be correct. Yes, no one under 21 could go in under certain provisions. So there are provisions in state law where a person under 21 can be in a tavern, and those would still be in effect.
So the ABLE Commission regulations supersede essentially any of these eight classifications? If there's...
Yes and no. If, that's why we're trying to change this.
It's a stump the questioner.
If the ABLE Commission has taken jurisdiction and they have issued a license for an establishment to sell alcohol, then the low-point beer is subservient to that. If they do not possess an alcohol license from the ABLE Commission, by Oklahoma Constitution, the ABLE Commission does not have the authority to regulate 3-2 beer. It comes on the communities. So that's where the Class 8 license would be the main factor. And right now, it's so confusing on any of those factors that patrolmen really don't know what enforcement action to take, because city law doesn't match state law.
Lieutenant, is this just the beginning of, because this is still confusing. And I'm sure you all probably would rather have something that was a lot more consistent for everyone to understand. But even with this, this cleans it up a little bit, but it still leaves a lot in reference to whether or not it's the ABLE Commission, whether or not it's the jurisdiction of the municipalities, or the person selling low-point beer. Would you agree that it still needs some work in reference to both the state and the municipalities to have something a little bit more consistent for all enforcement?
Yes and no. It depends on which section you're talking about, because Title 37 is divided into three sections. The Alcoholic Beverage Control Act, which deals just with alcohol, anything over 3.2 or 6%. Then you've got the Low Point Beverage, which is the 3-2 beer, and then Tobacco Access, the Youth Access to Tobacco Act. So to answer your question, yes, it does need to be cleaned up, but the state law has to be cleaned up first before city ordinance can follow. And the beer ordinances, or the state beer laws, are very liberal, and it's done like that on purpose. And they're a lot more user-friendly. There's not as much regulation by the state that goes on with it. You can sell beer at your establishment merely by going down to that county court clerk and obtaining a permit. So licensing procedures are a lot easier to maintain. But as those beer laws have changed, there are eight activities that are within state law, and those eight activities were never mirrored by our city ordinance. So we had two classes, one for a package store and two for everybody else. So we would literally have to sit out in the parking lot and walk through an establishment and pick out the activities they're doing, then go sit and look at the codebook and figure out which classification they are and which ordinances apply. And this will help with that.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I think part of my confusion is, I'm trying to listen to what you're saying here with your perspective, and then I come back to the ABC 1, 2, and 3 in zoning. That's a whole different issue?
Yes, sir. And I don't know anything about zoning, and I'm glad for that. That's a whole different deal. And eventually, that may have, you guys may have to work on that as well, but that's kind of out of my area of expertise, the zoning area.
So what we're talking about here has nothing to do with the ABC 1, 2, and 3?
No, sir. That's a business classification given by zoning to conduct a general business activity. These are specific licensing ordinances that I deal with.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for all that input. Ready to vote on item 8G? This item's just being introduced today.
We need to move it.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8H, modifications to our landscaping ordinances.
Mayor Aubrey Hammond Tree is going to come up from the Planning Department to talk to us about this. We've had this ordinance in for a year or so. And in the implementation thereof and going through the actual practical application, we found some errors, or not errors, but areas that we'd like to revise and make it a little more user-friendly, to help get a few more species of plants available and such with that operating.
Great presentation. Done. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Aubrey Hammond Tree Planning Department. You have two items on the agenda that go in tandem with each other. The first item is making some modifications to the landscape ordinance. The second item is adopting the Trees and Plants for Oklahoma City document. This is a reference document. It's referenced in the landscape ordinance in certain sections that require certain treatments, like buffering and screening. Originally, when we adopted the appearance standards last November, this document was referenced. Since we've been working with it during plan review, we've noticed that applicants may not have a mechanism that's clearly stated so that if they want to substitute plant material on a specific site, they didn't have a way to do that. So what we're doing is cleaning up the ordinance reference in the landscape ordinance to this document, adopting it by reference in the landscape ordinance. And we also made some modifications inside the Trees and Plants document to let applicants know what the process would be if they'd like to suggest different plant materials for their site, so they can be reviewed on a site-by-site basis. And we've worked with Development Services Department to establish an internal process for that review so that it doesn't impede the general plan review timeframe for that applicant. There are criteria listed in this document for selecting appropriate species to substitute, so that can be reviewed by the Development Services Department in the course of plan review, or it can be referred to the Planning Department if specific expertise is needed on that tree substitution. In addition, if this document is going to be maintained in the city, sometimes new plant material and species come on the market and are available that we might want to add to this document. And conversely, we might want to remove plant material from this document that hasn't been performing well. And so we've developed a mechanism so that we can do modifications to this document, and it would be presented to council via a city manager report. So those are the basic changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Comments or questions for our end?
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to say thank you for taking a hard look at this. You know, I personally had some experience recently with tree sizes and substituting trees, and it's a complicated piece for the developer to deal with. So thank you for...
All right. Thanks, Aubrey. Anybody else? All right, how about a motion then? Ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. On item 8I, this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8I? All right, looks like we're good to go. How about a motion? Second?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 8J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8J? All right, how about a motion there?
Yes.
Second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8K is a public hearing. This is a budget amendment to add some additional bus routes. All right, comments or questions on item 8K? All right, cast your votes. Okay, come on up. Good morning. Joshua, we'll need your name and address for the record.
All right. Joshua Zambrano, and 5701 South Agnew Avenue, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that right now, our bus routes are somewhat inadequate because they don't run early enough for temp agencies or other employment that starts at 5:00 to 6:00 a.m. And they don't run late enough to get people to and from public buildings like the library that close 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. So while it is important to add additional bus routes, we do need to look into the current times, and it just came to my mind right now, so I wanted to mention that. Thanks.
All right. Thanks for coming down. We have a motion in a second? All right, we're voting on item 8K. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Item 8L is an item that's been before council, been discussed for quite some time, and we have several options for the council to consider.
Mayor, could I frame the issue if you don't mind? Back in August, probably, of 2009, as we were putting together the MAPS 3 program, we had the eight programs pretty well outlined, and we were going toward a little over $700 million program, seven years, and such. And as we were finalizing the program, some things came to attention. One of the things that we talked about at that point in time was that one of the more thought-to-be preferred sites for the convention center would have been on the site where the OGN E substation was. And to move that substation and move the lines associated with it was thought to be about $30 million at that time. And so we added $30 million for that. At the same time, Councilman White, Councilman Bowman asked that we take a look at some potential money for a hub station and to also take a look at some matching funds for potential commuter rail at that time, or some white rail. And so $10 million was added into the budget for the modern streetcar. At the same time, we got the report back from Har Gray, who's doing the consultant on the park, and we had $120 million in the park, and we thought $130 would probably be a safer number. So we increased the park's number from $120 million to $130 million. We can only do sales tax in three-month periods. And so we rounded up at that point in time to seven years, nine months, and that gave us the $17 million contingency that was in there. There wasn't a $17 million contingency at that point. So that was the package that was put together and put out to the voters. It was voted on in December that year and passed. Some of the campaign materials did say $280 million for the convention center. They combined that. When we started the process out after that, we'd had several presentations at councils, and we've broken that $30 million out or asterisked as a subcategory under the convention center of that $30 million for infrastructure. And some places, I think primarily, we showed as a $280 million total budget with an asterisk that shows this $30 million for infrastructure. This has kind of been a side note. And that's been in presentations at council that Mike Myers has made here several times. It was shown that way when we had the workshop with the MAPS 3 board back in April, or whenever that was, May, whenever that was. It was shown that way when we brought it forth, when we worked on the calendar a few months. And so it's been pretty consistently shown that way as $280, but $30 million out there. And then we cited the substation, or the convention center. And of course, that is not the desired location or the recommended location to be where the substation is. Some people believe it would still be beneficial to move it. It'd benefit the park. There's some discussion about that whole issue. I thought our critical issue with MAPS 3 was going to be the timing. And so we had a schedule that we discussed and went through the MAPS process, and that came to council and was voted on in July, and it was a split vote, and we decided whether we were moving what projects up and not and moving down. We had a big discussion at that point in time. After that, I thought we'd bring back an implementation schedule that would simply memorialize that time schedule. I was wrong, because as we went through the process and brought that implementation schedule, plan back through the MAPS 3 process, the convention center subcommittee chaired by Tom McDaniel, who's with us here today, said, you know, as we're going forward, we really need to memorialize and get that $30 million into our total budget and make it $280. And through the subcommittee, and I know some of the councilmen were there that day, they moved and said, let's modify the budget and put that as a one number in there of $280 million. Now, the plan that Mike Myers had put together, or ADG at the time, the staff had been working with, we'd just kind of always shown that as an asterisk, as clearly an asterisk, and it says infrastructure $30 million on the side. We went to the MAPS 3 full committee, and the same thing, and not only is Tom McDaniel here, who's not only chairman of the subcommittee, chairman of the MAPS 3 committee, and I see Mike Adams is here today, who's also on the subcommittee. And they came forth and said, yes, let's put that $30 in with the convention center to make it a $280 million project. And so we brought that recommendation forth, and we brought back forth the recommendation that was originally put out, where we keep it in that subcategory of $30 million for infrastructure. And then I've talked enough council to know that there was not consensus on this item. And so we put on a compromise item that would put 15 into the park and 15 into the subconvention, just for a compromise type situation. Now, let's go back to OGN E for a second, because if it is chosen, if that's our desire not to move that substation, some have talked, can we screen it? And yes, we can. We've talked to OGN E, and we believe that to putting up a screen, and that hasn't been totally defined, but a example of that could be a concrete wall that looks like stackstone, similar to what's on the bridge that we talked about this morning where the canal comes under the I-40. I think most of you have seen that, where you can stain the brick a different color. It's not a bad-looking appearance. We think for $300,000, $400,000, somewhere along that lines, we can probably have a pretty nice screening that would cover most of the substation. Now, there are some electrical lines that go through the park and adjacent to the park. There's a line that goes east and west down Fourth or Fifth Street, Fourth Street, that goes across there. And then there's a line, and these are major transmission lines, that goes on the east side of Robinson, not in the park, but on the east side of Robinson, until you get to the very south end, and then it kind of kitty corners across the park. And if we were to take care of those lines, because the other lines, the minor lines in the park, those all go away, but these are our big transmission lines. If we were to move those, the total cost of getting rid of... If we were to move those, the total cost of getting rid of that major line going east and west, and the line not in the park, along Robinson, that cuts across, the total cost of that, we think is right around $5 million. But, I don't believe that's all a MAPS-3 cost, and I don't, we haven't negotiated that, but I think under the franchise agreement, part of that cost should be borne by OG&E. And we don't have that all worked out, and that would be a negotiation through OG&E. But the total cost, we believe, is slightly over $5 million if you wanted to screen the substation, take out that east-west line, and take out that Robinson line. And that's a point of discussion, because is that necessary to take out that line? It's not in the park, it's across the street from the park, and again, that's a policy issue to come forward. So with that background, that's why we're here today. After I thought we had it all worked out, we're just going to memorialize the implementation, or the schedule that we had, you know, from two months ago, or six weeks ago, we're back to decide what to do with this $30 million. And I know I've talked, I think, to all the council, or most of the council about this. I know there's not consensus necessarily on this issue, and I'm here to tell you that we're looking for direction today, and I think any decision you make would be a good decision to help us move forward, and I think we can get by. It's a question of the size of the convention center. Does it need to be 250 or 280? Right? You know, you're talking about some square footage that's going to, you know, the larger it is, you'll be able to host maybe an extra convention or two because of having a larger. You know, 250 was the original number that was thought to be needed at the start of the process. And so, with that, we have Mike Myers here with ADG, and he's going to go through a presentation on the implementation schedule.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Couch, thanks for being here. I'm glad you recognized that Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Adams are here as well. The presentation that we're going to make today is really the culmination of about eight months' worth of work, and the input from an awful lot of people, from the Citizens' Advisory Committee, to the subcommittees, to many citizens who've attended these meetings, a number of different consultants that have engaged, both by ADG and by the city, to help in this process. Some of the information that I'm going to show you upfront, you've seen before, we're doing this as part of a review, but it's a review of the entire, and a summary of the entire plan, which you've received as part of your packet for the meeting today. Once again, the plan includes not just the implementation, the program order, which you have previously approved, it includes conceptual scopes of work, and it includes budgets. And this has been presented to the Citizens' Advisory Committee as well. There have been some edits since the last Citizens' Advisory Board meeting, but these are edits which were recommended either by subcommittees or by the Citizens' Advisory Board itself. This is a very brief summary of what those edits include. It's been reformatted, we've tried to make it a little bit easier to read with larger fonts. We've removed proper names from some of the facilities, such as the ballpark and the convention center, since those have changed in the past, and we want this to be a document that can stand for a long time. We've added paddling to the Oklahoma River to demonstrate the fact that that is more than a rowing venue. We've added, and at the request of both the Convention Center Subcommittee and the Advisory Board, we've added some language from the CSNL executive summary that was prepared for the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber with respect to the actual convention center piece. The implementation plan includes the program, the project timeline, which has, as I said before, been approved by city council previously. Once again, on the budgets, the budgets include consulting, architectural and engineering fees, environmental investigations, geotechnical and construction testing, land acquisition where appropriate. Each project has its own project contingency, in addition to the $17 million overall program contingency, which Mr. Couch referred to earlier. Once we allocated those costs, the balance became the cost available for construction. And once again, the construction budgets, which had previously been published and made known, we have deemed as midpoint budgets. So, those budgets, if it was $130 million, it is $130 million as of January 1, 2016. If work occurs, any kind of work occurs on that project prior to January 1 of 2016, those budget amounts are diminished by 3% per year to reflect the cost of inflation. If it's after January 1 of 2016, they're increased by 3% to allow for the cost of inflation. The reason for doing this was to allow, try to allow parity for projects that came early in the project, and projects that come later in the project, so that they have the same relative amount of budget available to them for construction. The next set of slides is project-specific, and we're going to start in the same order that we've gone from the very beginning of any presentation that we've made. The convention center is the first budget. As Mr. Couch pointed out, there are three versions of the convention center budget. Version A is effectively a $280 million midpoint budget. It includes the $30 million for a total of $280 million. The construction for, actually, design for the convention center would start sometime in 2012, and construct, actually, it starts in 2014. Construction would actually start in 2016. Version B is a $250 million convention center budget, with the $30 million being added to contingent, as an infrastructure contingency, and you'll see that slide at the end of the presentation. Everything else would stay the same in terms of the timing of the project, but because this is a $250 million project, obviously, the size of the facility would be reduced proportionately based on the reduced available construction cost. Version C is the compromised version that Mr. Couch referred to. It has a $265 million convention center budget, and $15 million then gets added to the park's budget, which would increase their budget from $130 million to $145 million. Once again, the size of the convention center would be between the, between both the A and the B components. The overall size of, do this off the top of my head, the $280 million convention center budget would allow for approximately 530,000 overall square feet of convention center. The 200, version C, the 265 million, would allow for 500,000, and version B, the $250 million, would allow for approximately 470,000 overall square feet. Because the park is impacted by version C, we've shown versions A and B together. This is the original $130 million park budget. Work on the park would be divided into three constructions, design and construction phases, a very early phase, which would have a minimal amount of money, approximately $11 million, that would be dedicated to finding a way to land the pedestrian bridge on the south end of the upper park, and to try and provide some landscaping on the far north end of the upper park. That would take place fairly quickly. The completion of the upper park would take place around the midpoint of the program, and the completion of the lower park toward the very end of the tenure program. Version C is the version that would add $15 million to the park budget. Timing would stay approximately the same. For purposes of this version, we've added that $15 million to the first design and construction phase, which would take place very early in the program, but that is something that still could be open for discussion and consideration. Modern streetcar and transit has not changed really from the last time we presented any kind of a budget to you or to the advisory committee. That budget still is a $130 million midpoint budget. Construction on the streetcar is phased in a number of different ways, and includes some procurement phases whereby we would go out and try to purchase rail and perhaps cars earlier in the program, partly because it can take, rail is sometimes a one-year lead item, cars can be as much as two to two and a half years. So, procurement of those, of that equipment and those rails would happen long before construction. We've been, we've, just to let you know what some of the progress has been with respect to our involvement on the streetcar and the subcommittee's involvement, we've had some significant meetings with Rick Kane and COTPA, and with COTPA's consultant Jacobs. We're concerned, we were concerned that our schedule tracks with the schedule that COTPA has with respect to trying to obtain federal money. We are now very convinced that the schedule that we've provided in the program order, in the project timeline, which you approved, tracks very well with the schedule that COTPA is currently on in trying to obtain federal financing. We have, we have told the subcommittee that we're going to continue to monitor the progress that COTPA makes, so that we can make sure that if we need to make adjustments to the schedule for MAPS-3, we can advise the advisory board and council of those changes, so that we can make sure that we take advantage of all the federal funding that may be available. Oklahoma River. You're probably aware that, I mean, this budget hasn't changed, it's still a $60 million midpoint budget. We are in the process right now of, we have a consultant on board who is working to provide working drawings for a, for the river lighting for the last 1,000 yards of the racecourse. That consultant has nearly completed with their work. Once they've completed that work, the, that project will go out to bid, and we'll keep you advised about progress on that. We've also engaged, the city's also engaged a consultant to look at a feasibility study for wind screens for that same second 1,000-yard course, and they are in the process of putting together their first presentation and recommendation to the city. The river projects will be done in four phases, the lighting and the wind screens, the first phase, a number of other projects, all of which are listed in your, on your implementation plan, would be the second phase. The whitewater facility would be the third phase, and the balance of the project in Phase 4 would utilize whatever funds would be available at the end of the project for the additional landscaping and other components of the river, and river improvements. Fairgrounds. Budget remains the same, $60 million midpoint budget. Work on the fairgrounds would be in two phases. First phase, which would happen fairly early in the project, would be parking and site improvements. That will happen fairly quickly. We have not yet engaged a consultant, but that's something that will happen, I believe, before the end of the year. We'll solicit for the, for a consultant to provide work for the parking and site improvements. We've worked with Tim O'Toole and the parks people, I mean, the fairground people, to make sure that that happens in a way that works with the events that always take place at the fairgrounds.
Mike, may I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
The fairgrounds has a very, very detailed master plan, long-term master plan, that a lot of this was built around. Do we need to add an additional consultant to your mind to review that work, or could we not kind of mirror what they've already designed?
We're using, that's a, that's a great question. We're using the fairgrounds' master plan as kind of a guide. The consultant that we would use, that we would engage for the site improvements and for the parking would be to actually design construction drawings to go out to bid. Next, the senior health and wellness centers. Once again, we're estimating that there can be four health and wellness centers. We, there was a total of $50 million, which has, that budget has not changed, for the health and wellness centers. There would, we think that there will be four. The city has engaged and is about to receive a final report from AIP and KMD with respect to components of the health and wellness centers that may be common to a number of them. We still recognize that each of these health and wellness centers, depending on where it's located, depending on the community it's going to serve, may be different, but there will be some common elements, and part of the reason for the AIP and KMD study is to identify what those are. So the subcommittee's working on that. We also know that the partners, the operating partners for these projects are going to be very important, and there is, there is actually a draft RFP for those partners, which has been submitted to the subcommittee, and which we hope to finalize next month, to allow us to go out and solicit for partners, and at the same time, we will be going out to solicit for architectural and engineering services for that first center, which will be constructed very early in the program. Trails. The trails budget of $50 million midpoint budget has not changed. We are, we also, we have an RFQ out right now for a consultant to design the first phase of the trails. We expect that to happen very early in the program, and the first phase would probably be a trail that would go from Overholser to connect to the Oklahoma River Trail at its west end. Sidewalks. Once again, that budget has not changed. There is an RFQ out right now for architectural and actually, engineering services to work on a, and I'm going to use the phrase, "master plan," to help determine what, where the initial sidewalks are going to go. As part of the implementation plan, we understand that there needs to be a lot of involvement on the part of the sidewalks and trails committee, on the part of council, and other people to determine exactly where there's, where they're going to go, but that engineer will assist in that process along with ADG and the MAPS staff. But the idea is to get sidewalks under construction as soon as possible. Contingency, program contingency, excuse me. Versions A and C show a $17 million contingency, which is the original contingency that Mr. Couch spoke about earlier. Versions B of the contingency has $30 million for an infrastructure contingency, in addition to the $17 million overall program contingency. That's a lot of information to go over very quickly. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor.
Yeah?
I have a question about the, on the rail, on page 11. The $10 million that was put into that budget for the hub, I don't, it, it, there's, the $10 million's in there, but I don't see a designation that leads me to, to the hub.
It is a specific line item in here, and I know this is really hard to read, but I, what it's, what is it, 9.25, because it's, it takes place early in the, in the, in the... Because it's, it takes place early in the, in the, in the project, so it has been deflated, if you will, by 3% a year to reflect the fact that we, those dollars may be spent very early in the program. So there is a specific line item to reflect that.
In, in the, in a more detailed budget than the one that you have here.
Um, I, it's, it is on there, isn't it?
What?
I believe it is.
Show it to me.
Okay, it is, if you look at Transit Phase 1, has several subheaders.
I found it.
And so it, it is there. Thank you.
It's there. Okay. I just couldn't, I just didn't see where it was.
There's, like I said, it's a lot of information in a short time.
All right. Any comments or questions for Mike before we discuss the, the issue? Yeah, David.
Thank you, Your Honor. In looking at, and I think the question really to us concerns the $30 million, I was trying to identify any written documents that was presented to the voters prior to the election that broke down the $777 million, the total program by project, and the only thing I could find was on the website how it broke down the, the cost by projects. Do you, or Mr. McDaniels, or Mr. Adams, do you know of a document that shows how the projects were broken down by cost at the time the information was presented to the voters?
The instructions that we were given when we started were to use 250 million for the convention center. We've been consistent with that since December of last year. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I am not familiar with all of the documents that.
Yeah, Mike was not even hired during the campaign. It was a year afterwards.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any, Eric?
You know, I'm only aware of one document. It's a yellow and white flyer that's on the city's website that was a part of the pre-campaign materials. I'm not aware of any other documents that were released from the city other than just that one.
Well, could you tell me how much was set aside or identified for the convention center in that document?
So in that document, it prescribed 280.
That's what I've seen. So I just wanted to clarify what was presented to the voters as far as the amount for each project.
I think the one thing I'd like to add with that is obviously each of the projects, as you get into the details though, I mean, those were just single figures that were assigned to each of the projects. There's several components individually underneath the eight major projects, as we talk about different wellness centers and different phases and things, but obviously none of those details were provided early in the process. Those are what are coming out to us today.
I understand. I'm just making a point that I think it's important that if we presented something to the voters, that we should follow through with that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, let's skip and then.
Okay. Excuse me.
With that, there was a, a, a location that was pretty much, for all practical purposes, identified as the location site for the convention center. And, and wasn't the, the substation, wasn't it part of the issue of the $30 million that was necessary for the removal of that?
You know, it's my understanding that the answer is yes, that the original $30 million was budgeted for the substation relocation costs, but as for the actual location of the convention center, I think that we had always envisioned that there was going to be a study determining best location. That just was one of those options.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Eric.
He said what I was going to say.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for either of these two?
Just a brief comment. On any of the construction projects you've ever been associated with, has anybody at the end of the day said, "Hell, we made it too big"? I've done several projects. I've never heard that comment, but at the end of the day, we should have made it smaller. It's always been just the opposite. We should have made it bigger. And I think that's an important point to consider as we go forward. This is not going to be a, a repetitive process every year. We can stretch it a little bit. We need to make it as big as we can initially go forward.
Mayor.
Yes?
I agree with Pat. I just don't think we ought to make a decision on the front end that we only make one project larger. The same, that, that argument holds true for every project on the list, and I, and as a result, I have a, I have a, I'm going to move the B, I'm going to move version B with an amendment. I have an amendment prepared, and I'm going to pass it out.
Okay.
Your Honor, before we get into the motion phase, can we have a little bit more general discussion?
Certainly.
On, on the various options? I, I just, I feel that the information we gave the voters was a $280 million convention center project. There was no project in there that listed $3 million discretionary fund for the city council to spend however they wanted. I think we only have two honorable choices. Is, is to spend it on the convention center or give it back to the voters. We end MAPS three months early, and they get their $30 million back as we did need it for the convention center as we intended. To, to spend it on other projects, to me, is, is disingenuous, and it, it chips away at the public's trust in our city council.
Meg?
Now, I, I, I think I respectfully disagree with that, Councilman. I, I think we have a very valid option to consider putting it in a contingency right now, given that I don't think we have all the facts available. My recollection is that we very clearly specified 250 million for the convention center, and that was in lots of conversation with the chamber and the other parties that were involved in helping us frame some of these projects, and that the $30 million was clearly identified as being required to move the substation. The voters voted for the total package of $777 million, and we have a firm obligation to meet all of the, the standards and the projects that we submitted to the voters. But I just don't feel at this moment in time that we have enough information in front of us to decide how those dollars should be spent. They very well may need to be spent on the convention center. We may discover things in the course of developing that site that require that some of that money go there, but we don't know that yet. And my, as I've been thinking about this, I think a little bit about our, our personal budgets. If somebody, you know, were to hand you an extra $10,000 in your annual budget, you certainly would find a way to spend it very, very quickly. And, and we don't know what that need is yet, and that I believe that we have some very specific things that need to be done with regard to the transmission lines that will affect the park. I believe that there are some wonderful options available to potentially wrap that substation, whether it's using decorative stone, as the city manager recommended. I've, I've actually, a couple of years ago, approached both O'Ginney and Hans Bootser, who's a local architect, for some ideas of things that have been done internationally, and there are ways to wrap substations with netting and LED lights that turn them into pieces of artwork. We might be able to do something iconic that we could use around the city. So I, I find myself today in a position of simply feeling like I don't have enough information to make the best decision for all of the projects involved, and think from a fiduciary responsibility and, and for the trust of the citizens, that we ought to place that money in contingency until we have more information.
Okay.
But it was not presented to the voters as a contingency fund. If, if we don't relocate the substation, and that was clearly what it was intended to be, your asterisk, and I'm always suspicious of asterisks because the print gets very small, but the $30 million was set out for a specific purpose, relocate the substation. If we don't have to relocate the substation for the convention center, we either spend it on the convention center, or we give it back to the voters. I don't think we have the right to hold it back so if we have an overrun in, in street cars or, or the river, we spend it someplace else. I mean, I think that $30 million was intended to be associated with the convention center. Now, it was intended to be a specific site, I'll agree with that, but once we decided we were going to move that side, move the side of the convention center, we had no need to relocate the substation. That money ought to go to the convention center, or we ought to give it back to the voters by ending MAPS three months early. I realize that may take a vote of the people to do that, but we've got lots of elections between now and the time that we have to make that decision.
Okay. David? I would agree with Pat that if we don't use it for the 280, if that truly was, and I'm, I'm still not convinced, but that's all the information I've seen, that 280 million was the figure given to the public prior to the election, that we need to honor that statement or terminate the sales tax early enough to where we can refund or, you know, not take in the $30 million. At this point, I don't see a need to relocate the substation. I was over there this weekend, took plenty of pictures, and I'd be happy to share them with you all. I see the problem, two main power lines going east to west, and if they could either be placed underground or somehow relocated, I think that's the only issue with respect to that substation, in my opinion. For example, Early Wine Park, which I use, many of our friends use all the time, has power lines running along May Avenue on the side of the park. Now, this is on the east side of Robinson, not along the side of the park as far as the transmission lines. And, and Early Wine also has power lines on the north side of the park, along the line where the houses are adjacent to it, as well along 119th Street on the south side. Nobody has ever talked to me and said, "Boy, I wish we could take these power lines down." They just have become, you know, not noticeable. It's kind of like when we were in high school, you know, if we had a blemish developed on our face, to us, it's a big deal, but to everyone else, it's probably not that noticeable. I think it's the same thing right now. We're focusing way too much on this substation, and I think with just a little bit of effort, we can conceal it to the point to where people don't even recognize the fact that we have a substation there, or that it's a problem. So if we're going to pull away $30 million from this project as it was presented to the public, then I agree with Pat. We ought to return the money and terminate the sales tax early enough to, to where we would only collect 747 million instead of 777 million. Thank you.
Over here, Larry.
I, I realize everybody has their own personal perspective on this, and, and I'm going to share mine. When the, when the MAPS III proposals were developed, and when the material was presented, and we were either in favor of it or not in favor of it as a council, I happened to be in favor of it. I went out on a number of occasions and gave talks on the importance of MAPS III and how it was needed. I gave talks on the importance of all projects within there, although I happen to have a favorite project. My favorite project happens to be the White River rafting portion of it, but the convention center was a part of it. I wholly endorsed it, and I told people that the amount of money that would be budgeted for that project was 280 million, and I believe I'm personally committed to support whatever effort comes up to make sure that the 280 million is allocated to the convention center. If the decision is made not to, then I concur that we should just give the other $30 million back. But personally for me, I have to support the 280 million because that's what I said to the voters, and I want my trust to be, to be kept intact. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Got it?
There's a couple of things that we can learn contrasting this with the original MAPS, and, and from that experience, we had an entire mayor's election basically decided between Guy Liedman and Kirk Humphries, short calls in the arena with Guy Liedman wanting to indefinitely delay the arena. I think this has come up over and over. I think the fiscally conservative option is to keep money back and, and look for the unknowns, as Meg was saying. You're going to have environmental abatement issues, water table issues that are just not known at this time. And so, learning from previous experiences, I think the fiscally conservative approach is to, is to wait and see what unknowns come. I think the other lesson is that clearly this, this log rolling, this lumping eight different projects together is inferior to the way we did it originally, having specific line items for the taxpayer, so they know exactly what they're getting, and we don't have this kind of confusion later. I think the idea that somehow the 280 million was presented to the, to the voter, and that's some kind of bond with the voter, is a, a little bit disingenuous, and, and I think the reason is that, number one, there were other things promised. We promised 57 miles of trails, for example, and we're only going to deliver 32 miles now. We had pictures of the convention center on the quarter shore South Park, and so if we're looking, just looking at literature, I think that, that would be problematic. Any Google Earth, you know, search of that, of that site would show a large substation on Southwest Fourth and Robinson. I think this also goes to the issue we've talked about in, in previous meetings, that we had two studies that we relied on, for this is, convention center's more than a third of MAPS III, and we relied on two different studies that were not commissioned by the city and were not available to the voters. And that presents a problem when we're talking about a bond with the voters. We have the Convention, Sports and Leisure Study, which was, to this day, has been withheld from the public, has not been released to the public. We have the HOK Study, which used 250 million as the amount that, that we needed for, I mean, that's, 250 million wasn't pulled out of a hat. We had a study, the HOK Study, that said 250 million. That's where that number came from. So if that, if that had been released to the public, I think that this would be less confusing today. The site locations issue in, in the HOK Study would have been vetted. The elephant in the room of this, this, we have this other issue of a convention center hotel, which the Convention, Sports and Leisure Study, which if it had been released to the public, would have let the public know, you can't, the convention center's not viable, at least according to this, this study, without a hotel, and the public's going to have to come up with an additional $50 million for a hotel. The public did not know that at the time they voted on MAPS III. They didn't know about the substation or the convention center hotel, and both of those should have been vetted. I, I, I do take, in August of 2009, O'Ginney made a presentation on what the substation relocation would cost. It wasn't 30 million. It was, it was between a low of 70 million and a high of 100 million. That, that's available to anyone through an open records request. It's freely available, and, and some journalists have it. But that's, that's what, four months before the election was, was the bid from O'Ginney, was somewhere between 70 and 100 million for relocating the substation. If the public was, was aware of that, I think we would have had a thorough vetting over the ensuing four months. Now, subsequently, the city intensely negotiated with O'Ginney, and that number plummeted, but in August of 2009, the number was not 30 million. I think that if transit, if it was not the convention center, if transit, if you had some other, say that, say that you, you needed $130 million maintenance facility for it to be viable, and the public was going to have to come up with $50 million, I think we'd be talking about, I don't think that would fly. Finally, I would say if it's, if it's in contingency, that would give us, I mean, we're talking about the voters and the taxpayers and what they want. Let's ask them. I mean, I know, let's do, let's do polling. I mean, I know that that's not the way you run a government. It's a representative democracy. You can't do it on every issue, but let's ask them what they want. Let's poll 10,000, 20,000, 30,000 voters and ask them, now that we have this 25, 25 million, what, what do you think we should do with it? Now, if it's, if the polling numbers come back 55, 45, or even 60, 40, that would be one thing, but let's say the numbers come back 80, 20, or 90, 10. I think it would be hard to ignore that kind of large feeling among the public and the taxpayer. If we're concerned about a bond with the taxpayer, let's ask them right now. Let's do polling. The convention center polled at 27% approval before MAPS III, as low as 8% in words like word "three," with 92% disapproval. So that's before the public knew about the substation. That's before the public knew that they were going to have to come up with an additional 50 million for a hotel. Let's ask them now that they know those two additional things where they would allocate the money. Thank you.
All right. Pete?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, some of the things that were, these other ideas of what we could do are all interesting. I don't think we can do any of them today, though. I think the only way to preserve our ability to, to be that flexible is to place the money in contingency, and that's the substance of my motion. It, it places the money in contingent, leaves all these options, Councilman Shadid's option, Councilman Ryan's option, all those options are still left open to us. We haven't spent the money. We haven't done anything. The only, the only thing that is to be done with the contingency money is, is this, this resolution asked that we immediately undertake to develop an innovative plan to minimize the adverse impact of the substation and the power lines on the park. That's it. That's all it asks for. Doesn't ask for the spending of the money, just to come up with some innovative ideas about what we can do. And I would renew my motion to adopt B, subject to the resolution that each of you have been handed.
Okay, Gary? Okay, Gary?
I don't know where to start. Being the council representative on the MAPS Advisory Board has put me in all the meetings of all these projects, and believe me, I've heard every version of every project. I'm sure Jim Couch kept looking at me as he was going through his explanation, because I don't think, when he says he didn't know it was going to come this way or this quick, that's, he's probably blaming me for that, because I sat in the convention center subcommittee when they were debating this issue, and when I asked my opinion, what I told them was that if they felt that that was part of their budget, they simply needed to move that on as a recommendation to the advisory board, and that the advisory board would take that on, and then they would vote it yes or no, that it's part of the convention center budget, and they'd move it on to council. I said, "You've got to get this in front of the policymakers." I knew the $30 million issue was not going to go away just by deferring this longer and longer and longer. And I said, you know, Lord knows that committee had enough bullseyes on it anyway, targets that it didn't need anymore, it simply needed to make its recommendation and move it on, and let this policymaking board decide what they wanted to do with it. So, that's why you're dealing with it today in the format that it's in. I'm going to, I'm going to support Option A, but I want to talk a little bit about why first. I don't know of any projects that I've ever seen done by the city that had a budgeted amount put into it that covered everything, or covered land purchase, covered utility relocations, it covered, you know, whatever it might be, we think there's an oil well underneath there, we're going to have to move, whatever it may be, and then before you ever got to the point where you started doing drawings and you found out one of those things wasn't needed, that you jerked money out of the budget without ever finishing that project to see if you did need it. That's why I think it's important to keep this in. Who knows whether the site selected for the convention center doesn't need $30 million for whatever they're going to find underneath the ground? We don't know that. You're right, we don't have enough information. But I don't know of any other time that we jerked a budget out. Let me give you a couple of examples. You mentioned transit. $10 million was put in there at the last minute, just like the 30 million was, for the hub. We now have a consultant saying they don't think it's going to take $10 million, it's going to take $6 million. The Transit Committee spent a lot of time in their last meeting discussing, hoping that the council would not take the money away from them and leave it in the Transit budget, because they don't know what it's going to be, what it might be needed for. So, if you do this to the convention center subcommittee, are you going to do, pull $4 million out of the Transit? Because they only need $6 million for the hub now. That's what the consultant has said, whatever that may be. The senior centers, there's been some discussion by some of the proposed, or the people that might be interested in partnering with us, that they might be willing to donate land, that they have already, or that might be in conjunction with property they have or whatever. So, are you going to pull money out of the senior centers now, when you think you might not need it, and move it over? I don't think so. You're going to leave it in there. It's, now, having said all of that, I'm going to tell you that however this vote goes today, I'm going to smile when I walk out of here, because we're going to build these projects, and we're going to build them the best way we can, and they're going to be great projects, all of them are. But the thing that concerns me about the pulling of this out of the convention center now, I understand the concept of pulling it out, putting it in contingency, and if we need it later, it might be available, might not, who knows? But the problem I have with pulling it out now is we've already, the project has already been lowered from what the original concept of why we needed a new convention center and what it was going to be. When you look at the amenities, and you look at the square footage, and you looked at the reasoning for why we needed a new convention center, if we could, if you pull the 30 million out, and the architect and the engineers can still look at the scope of the project and the amenities, and not say, "Yeah, but we're dealing with this amount versus this amount," then I'm okay with letting them design and bring it back to us and see what it is, and if we need more money, pull it out of contingency and do it, whatever. But sitting on the Convention Visitors Commission, I can tell you that the convention, the need for a new convention center is not wholly about just needing a new convention center. It's not just about getting new conventions, it's about the fact that our current convention center will continue to lose even the ones that we can host now, because we don't have things like ceiling heights, we don't have the new technology that everybody needs. If we don't keep up in the market for what you need as a convention center, using that scope, that study that was done to give us what we want in a new convention center, if we down, if we tell them, "You don't have as much money, so you're just designed to what dollar amount's sitting in the budget," then I don't think we're going to reach that concept of what the scope was in the convention center when we talked about what it would take to not only get new ones, but to keep the ones that we have. So, I'm a little concerned that the scope will not be designed as such. But I'll go back and say again, having said all of that, I don't know that any of these are killers, they're certainly not going to provide death to anybody, but I just find it strange that we want to pick and choose when we use the arguments of contingency, leave it in the budget, we might need it for that particular project later on, and I do have a little bit of sense of the fact that the, all of the documents, when we were going around talking about MAPS 3, said $280 million for the convention center. And yes, the substation, I wholeheartedly agree, was put in at the last, 30 million was put in at the last minute for the OGN E substation, but to me, that wasn't any difference than saying, "Oh, my God, we think there might be an oil well underneath it, so we need to add that." And then later on, we found out, well, there really wasn't one, so we don't need the money for it. Are you going to pull it back out? To me, it's the same concept, and I don't know that we've done that with any projects, certainly none that I remember aware of in my years with the city, so.
Your Honor. All right, yeah, Pat?
Just a quick comment on contingency funds. I'd like to reiterate a point that was made earlier. Each of these projects, in and of itself, contains contingency money, including the park. And I'm not sure what the total is, but I would guess around $5 million of contingencies for the park project. In addition to that, there's a $17 million infrastructure contingency fund available to help with those sort of things. So, we've got contingency money here before we have, we do anything with the $30 million. It's not like we had a bare-bones budget with no contingency dollars set aside for it. Each of the budgets that was, were developed, budgets were developed, yes, included contingency money. And so, how much contingency money do you need? They made an estimate of what was a reasonable number for contingencies, and it's in there, $17 million set aside separately as contingency money, and we didn't have any contingency money, as I recall, in MAPS 1.
That's right.
And so, I think we're in a good shape as far as contingency, without looking at this $30 million.
Okay. Any other comments, Meg?
No, I just might add to that, that as I've wrestled with making this decision and trying to decide what I think is the most prudent financial decision for the city, I've drawn a lot on our experience with the sports facilities oversight trust, and that's an example, you know, I think the citizens remember that that was a very unusual situation. We voted to extend that penny sales tax for a very short period of time, just that 15 months, and practically, the day we voted was the day we went into a recession, and where we thought we were going to collect $120 million to complete the two projects, at the end of the day, we collected about 108. That required that we go back and re-engineer the entire project, it's cost us more than a year delay in time to get the projects built, and although they will be built to a very high-quality standard, we had to, we had to reach very deeply into contingencies and other things to make sure that happened. And we're now looking at a seven-year, nine-month project, $777 million. We happen to be in an enviable economic climate right at this minute, and sales tax collections are strong, but we have no way to know over the course of this next cycle. I think what we do know is that we're going to go through some ups and downs, and to preserve the funds that were set aside for a reason that we don't need right now, to me, seems like it makes the most sense. And Gary, I thought your discussion was great, I felt like you defined exactly the definition of contingency and why we have it and why we need it. And I guess my last point would be that the study that was done, and was referenced when we decided on the options for the convention center, because we actually were presented with two options, if I recall correctly, a smaller footprint and then a much larger footprint, one of which was $250 million, and one of which was maybe as much as $475 million, and we opted to go with the smaller version to start with, with the opportunity to expand in the future if we needed to. But that number that was suggested by the consultants was 250 million, it was not 280 million.
Okay. I think Fannie is here to speak, she has signed up. Fannie, you want to take the microphone? Is there anyone else here in the room that would like to speak? Okay, we have several people, all right. Fannie, why don't you lead us off? I'll ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and we'll need your name and address for the record.
My name's Fannie Bates, my address is 1116 Northwest 27th Street. The people of Oklahoma City never wanted a convention center. This bill, MAPS 3, was specifically designed to give us things that they knew we wanted and trick us into voting for a convention center that we didn't want. What we wanted, one of the things that we wanted, and one of the things you could give us out of this, is at least some rail. We have a line that the city owns from 10th Street, from Douglas High School to the zoo, which could be made operable for about half a million dollars, and it could be running on weekends, and early in the morning, and late at night, and getting people to the zoo and back. New rail costs one-tenth of what new highways cost, one-tenth. We also have a line that goes to Tinker Air Force Base. You could put some of that money into, I'm talking about rehabilitating these lines. You can rehabilitate those two lines, and that would be something that's real, that's a part of our history and part of our future, something we would be proud of, because it's representative of who we really are. And I want to thank Tom Elmore for giving me information on that, because he has an encyclopedic knowledge of rail in Oklahoma, probably more than anybody else in the state. And we all have talked about that Oklahoma City is the tornado capital of the world. Cities all over the United States give people a list of shelters they can go to in case of a tornado. Oklahoma City doesn't do that. Oklahoma City doesn't do anything but scrape up our bodies after a tornado kills us. Some of this money could be used to beef up buildings we already have, to make them shelters, and then mark them as shelters. It wouldn't cost that much. Find buildings, there are abandoned buildings that have good shelters underneath them, that are full-size basements, it could be turned into a shelter for a small amount of money and marked, and people could be given a list of those.
Fannie, could you wrap up your comments?
At Wildwood Community, that's a predominantly black community, and they are not allowed to go to that shelter there. The shelter is safe for the white people that work at the zoo, the predominantly white people that work at the zoo. Those people at Wildwood have lived in that community for 30 or 40 years, and they're told they cannot go to the shelter in their own community, even though they've been paying taxes for decades and decades.
Fannie, I'm being reminded that you've got to stay on topic here for what we're discussing today.
This is the topic. The topic is that-
Well, we have, Fannie, we have opportunities at the end of the meeting for general comments to council.
These are not general comments. This is talking about what we want. This money should be spent on what we want and not on what the Humphreys want.
I'll give you another 15 seconds if you'd like to finish up. All right. Anyone else has signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, I think some ladies want to talk about sidewalk and trails.
Katie LeHugh? Katie, I will need your name and address for the record.
Oh, Katie LeHugh, 515 Northwest 27th Street.
And I'm somewhat, are you here to speak on the item that we're discussing, or were you?
Yes.
It says here, Item 12, and we're on Item 8, so is that just a miscommunication on your sheet?
I didn't write number 12 on there.
Yeah, it says Item 12, which would be items from council, which is more for general comments from citizens.
Oh, okay, I can wait.
Well, you don't need to wait if you're talking about the item that we're discussing, about the $30 million and the convention center budget and those types of issues. Is that what you wanted to speak on?
More so towards like the running trails.
Okay, then why don't you wait until the end of the meeting, and we'll give you a chance to talk there, and it looks as if the other two people that have come are in similar mode, they've also signed up for Item 12. Is anyone here wishing to speak on their item that we're considering? Yeah, Joshua, come on up.
All right. And just similarity to what the previous person said, when I was here a few months ago, I was under the impression that the voters did not support the convention center like the other MAPS projects, and that this wouldn't pass a referendum if it were put to the vote, and again, also that after it was put to a vote, what I saw the process going on as was just that the convention center pushed these studies to really get all the funding directed from the projects that the public did support, transit and healthcare, and which arguably would be better at job creation and serving the public interest, and really just picked all the funding for itself, and we pushed this through without really having it examined, and the public never really saw it, and it's not so much about what the funding is for the, it's not so much about changing the funding, because we can always spend another $30 million on it if we need it, as far as the convention center, but it was the timeline that was actually changed, and that we bumped it up at the expense of the other projects, and again, that was a timeline that was never, never presented to the voters. We changed that last minute, and then David Orr recently said in the Gazette, "It's hard not to see this whole sordid affair as a cynical textbook case of bundling and bait-and-switch package the expense of unpopular project with ones people are enthusiastic about, all within an inferred timeline, then do the bidding of the ruling class in town once you get the vote." We were also told a month or so ago that this could be deferred, the vote, and then when two members were gone, it was put to the vote, and everything's being pushed through so fast, I mean, why do we need to push it through so fast? This timeline is just getting changed. Again, the voters support the transit, they support the healthcare, I don't see the support for the convention center.
Thanks, Joshua, appreciate it. Anyone else here wishing to speak on this item? All right, more comments from council? I'm assuming you've had five minutes to think more about it and have new things to offer. I'm wrong. All right. We're looking for a second then on Pete's motion. Who made the second? Okay, Meg made the second on the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any more comments or questions before we vote? Yeah, Gary?
Excuse me, to move Item L2 with the attached resolution that I sent you.
Sure, so it's Version B as amended?
Yeah, Version B as amended, excuse me.
Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
Pete, I ask you to just quickly explain your amendment, the 30 million, instead of going towards infrastructure, would be dedicated solely to a contingency fund, is that correct?
Moves the 30 million that was designed to move the substation into contingency with, to be earmarked for infrastructure needs.
In the park? I'm sorry, is-
Same thing, yeah.
Does your amendment restrict it to the park use?
No.
No.
It instructs the subcommittee, subcommittees involved and the advisory board to begin negotiations and fact-seeking on addressing the OGN E power line issue. With the money available, then the council would have the opportunity to address those needs, once they determine what they are.
So, does-
So it doesn't have anything to do with the $30 million?
What's that?
It doesn't have anything to do with the $30 million, then. What it does is tell somebody to do it and do a design. There's, the $30 million is not related to that project. So the amendment's interesting, but I don't think it really bears on what we're talking about.
Oh, it seems to me it gives direction to staff. It seems to me that it determines that the $30 million will go into the contingency fund, and that we are asking staff and the advisory board and the subcommittee that's involved to start the process of looking at what it would cost to wrap the substation and remove the lines that would affect the park.
But it's not, we do that, and I think that's important, but we shouldn't tie it to the $30 million.
Well, I think we are tying it to the $30 million.
I think we are too, and that's what concerns me a little bit.
Okay, well, I understand you may not be for this, but I think that's what-
They really relate. We can do this final resolve without having to talk about the $30 million at all, because there is contingency money in the park fund, there's contingency money in the general fund, that if somebody decides it's important to relocate transmission lines to shield the substation, then there's contingency money available to do that. We don't have to tap the $30 million.
I think if this motion fails, then we can entertain that idea. All right, yeah, David?
Your Honor, I'm sorry, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I don't see where it says that $30 million will be placed in a contingency fund.
It's just version B. Excuse me, it's version B of the, resolution version B, which basically would put the $30 million in an infrastructure budget.
He's taking version B and modifying it, saying it's going in contingency, but it specifically says that the MAPS III Citizens Advisory and the Park Subcommittee should develop an innovative plan to minimize the impacts of the substation and the overhead power lines on the development and the use of the MAPS III park.
Your Honor, question?
Yeah.
Am I the only one? I just received this a few minutes ago. Did anybody get this before the meeting? This is all brand-new, and I'm not in a position to even, you know, assimilate it right now. I think the honorable thing to do, quite frankly, is to vote on option A, and if that fails, then consider this at a later time. But I think the, if I understand it correct, option A, Jim, was the recommendation that the Citizens Advisory Committee recommended upon the recommendation of the Subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
And I think we should vote on that first.
Okay.
Sorry, motion?
I've already recognized the motion and the second to vote on item B. I understand your point.
It was made and seconded. I think we've got to dispose of it before we can do something else.
All right, we're voting on 8L2, version B.
As amended.
As amended. Ready to go? Cast your votes. The item fails four to five. Oh, sorry. Okay, the item passes, five to four. Your Honor, yes, David?
Excuse me. And I apologize, and I'm going to claim my newness to the council, but, and I know we voted on it, so it's not anything that we're going to change, but I read it as a $30 million going into an infrastructure budget, and that's the same as a contingency fund?
Basically, what this does is you adopted version B, it goes in the infrastructure budget, but you directed staff and the Citizens Advisory Board and the MAPS III Park Subcommittee to develop a plan to minimize the adverse impact of the substation and the power lines on the development of the, and use of the downtown public park with such plan to be implemented from the $30 million infrastructure budget. So it's, it's in a- David, if I could, in layman's terms, what that says is you voted for the original proposal that was put forward in 250 for convention and adding the $30 million into contingency. And you put a task on them that they had to create another project of moving the lines and doing something with the OGNB substation out of the contingency that you just created with the $30 million.
If you say specifically, it comes from the $30 million. Yes.
Thank you, and I apologize for being slow.
All right. On item 8M, understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes on 8M. Passed unanimously. Item 8N, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
All right, cast your votes on 8N. Passed unanimously. Item 8O, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes on item 8O. That item is moved to executive session. Item 8P, understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes on that. Passed unanimously. And item 8Q, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes, and that item moves to executive session. Item 8R, it's claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed under 8R? All right, no one has signed up. Looks like we're ready to go. You want to, give me a motion? And a second? Cast your votes. Claims are denied. We have item 9A. These are claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed under item 9? All right, sounds like we're good to go. How about a motion? All right, cast your votes. Those items are approved. Moves us to items from council. We'll start with a resolution reaffirming the city of Oklahoma City's adopted position to support the federal passage of the Main Street Fairness Act. This is brought to us by council members Sawyer and Ryan. David, do you want to say anything before we discuss it?
Just one comment. This has been a long-time part of our legislative efforts in Washington to get this thing adopted. I think we got to continue to press for that. I think our local merchants are being abused by this. They have unfair competition. And secondly, they provide a valuable service. They have merchandise on display, and they, a person goes in, looks at the merchandise, talks about it, finds out the strengths and faults, and goes home and orders it on the Internet. And I don't think that's fair to our merchant here that we have it. But I think this is, it's consistent with what we've said all along as a body, and as it was a part of our legislative agenda with, at the national level, ever since I've been on the council, and I just think that continues that effort.
All right, Meg?
I just, to add to that, which was very well said, that I think the number is somewhere between 12 and 14 million dollars, it's estimated, that the city is losing every year as a result of this. And so, you know, for a municipality that's so dependent on sales tax to run our budget, it seems like something that we ought to continue to bring forward and ask for help in Washington with.
Appreciate it. Yeah, David?
Your Honor, I like the idea of the city gaining 15 to 18 million additional dollars in revenue, and especially when we say, for example, that we could use that money to add another 100 to 150 police or firefighters. I think that's very important. We need to do that. I just want to make a comment on behalf of small businesses in general. The advantage or the loss of sales going to companies like amazon.com isn't solely for the sales tax. In many instances, that sales tax figure is not that significant. It's the convenience of being able to shop online goes into that decision. There are other advantages that local retailers have. I recognize that. It's a big part of Ward 5. I want to support those businesses. But what this can do, when we just turn over to the federal government the opportunity to increase their reach in taxation, often creates trouble if we don't know the underlying facts. This will adversely affect smaller businesses that may have occasional sales in other states that currently don't have a nexus, don't have a requirement to report in that state. It's going to add burden to those small companies. To us as accountants, it's great. It's more work for us. I'm more concerned about privately-owned businesses and not knowing the details, because I don't think we've been presented with all the details of this act. I think there's movement going on now that Walmart is in support of this, because they see their sales being impacted negatively by amazon.com. We're getting a lot of support from larger retailers who are reluctant to support this issue. I'm just making a comment. I'm in support that we go through with this resolution, but I need to just make the statement that whenever we start changing tax policy, that there's often unintended consequences that more often than not impact negatively small businesses who don't have the resources to comply with these new rules. Amazon.com certainly has enough resources to address this issue. They will not be impacted negatively by this, but there will be a lot of small businesses throughout the state of Oklahoma which could be impacted by this, and I just wanted to make that statement. Now, having said that, I'm in support of this resolution.
All right. Got Larry?
Question, if I purchase items for my own use through the Internet, am I not supposed to report that through a use tax?
Yes, but it's not widely adhered to.
Widesly adhered to. So if I'm not doing that, then this is going to look to me like a quote "tax increase" unquote.
But it really isn't.
But I should have been doing it all along.
That's correct.
And so I just want to get that point across, that this is really just a way of making sure that if I do buy through the Internet, that I'm paying my fair share, as opposed to if I go to a local brick and mortar store and purchase that.
Right. And the whole concept is the brick and mortar store is employing local people that are paying property taxes, or, you know, they're buying advertising in town and doing those type of things that the Internet folks are not doing. So there's already a disadvantage toward them, and that's further amplified by not paying sales tax.
And again, I defer to David's wisdom in the area of taxation, but most of the small business people that I've talked to about this particular issue see it as a fairness issue and a competitive issue, and they're in favor of this because it creates for them a more level playing field. But they may have some, maybe some traps down the road that they're not aware of.
Absolutely. And the item that's brought out is the streamline provision that currently 24 states adhere to. We've had many more clients withdraw from that, and here's the problem. Once you have an error with that system, and I'm sure it'll continue on with this system, to attempt to recover erroneously paid sales tax from a state is very, very challenging. The state of Oklahoma, because I contacted them last week, not on this matter, but for a client issue, says we will not even assign a refund claim for up to a year, and then depending upon the employee that we assign it to and their workload, it may be another six months before they can work that refund claim. So if you make an error in your old money back from Oklahoma, and I'm sure it's similar in other states, it can take up to 18 months to get that refund back. So just be careful. I just get concern from the government begins to, the federal government begins to expand its reach on commerce, because, again, there's often problems associated with that.
I need Larry to point out the reason, though, that the federal government has to. If we were complying with the laws that presently existed, there would be no need for this. No need. Absolutely none. The fact is, we know the present law's not being complied with, and there's only one entity that's capable of enforcing that, and that's the federal government. That's how we get into this thing. They're bringing us around to where we should be. It seems to me that your Walmart analogy is a good one, because what Walmart did to most small retailers, this, the Internet is now doing to the ones that are left. And so now that they're starting to feel the pitch, it's interesting to see they're ready to come in. I'm glad they're in. But the fact is, they did the very same thing in terms of choking sales off to small businesses that the Internet is now doing to those that survived. I always remember the article in the paper a year or so ago when Pipkin, I think, camera store closed, and they're, what they said was that people come in their store, look at cameras, compare them, use their sales card, and go home, buy it from, on the Internet. And I think, you know, we can, we can, we can beat ourselves about why it has to be this way, but there is no choice. We don't have a choice. The money, we either find a way to collect the money, or we let it go. I mean, there's no, it's not going to come any other way.
Okay. Ed?
Actually, I want to voice my support and also just appeal to the public to really realize that you are the primary driver of economic development. It's not, city government tries to come up with different ways to instigate or drive economic development, but our own individual behavior determines our economic growth and our sales tax revenue that the city is, has to provide services. Oklahoma City's in a unique environment in that we're completely dependent on sales tax. If you support a small local business, that money recirculates in the Oklahoma City economy. For example, if you eat in an Oklahoma City local restaurant, 70% of that money stays in the Oklahoma City economy. If you eat in a national chain, 70% of that money goes out of Oklahoma City and out of Oklahoma. If it stays in Oklahoma City, it just recirculates, you generate more sales tax. I've been as guilty as Pat and others have talked about, about shopping and then, and buying it on the Internet for convenience, and that's something I've really committed myself to changing, as well as supporting local businesses instead of, instead of large national chains. Even, studies come up with different numbers, but even a 10% change in how much we spend in local small businesses versus national chains would make a tremendous, tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars into the Oklahoma City economy. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments on this item from council before we vote? All right, Meg, you want to make a motion?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes on item 10A. Resolution passed unanimously. Still on items from council. Gary, you want to get us started?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick comment. I've been, we've heard over the past few months, many comments made about the vote and about, I'm talking about MAPS III, and about polling, and about what they like and what they don't like. I don't ever profess to know what the citizens want. I barely know what I want sometimes, so I don't profess to speak for the whole citizenry out there. This one was done just like the last one. We had a single vote on a number of items, and we put that out there. And the polling, whether you believe it or not believe it, the polling numbers were out there, the polling numbers were out there before the vote. The fact of the matter is, this election, just like the last election, the citizen, the majority of the people voting approved it, and this council needs to understand that that's, the package is what the citizens approve, and the package is what we need to build and make and do. As good a job on this one as we did on the last one. And the concept that, there were certain things, I won't tell you what they are, but there were certain things in this current package that I wasn't real supportive of. But the fact is, the majority of the citizens that voted passed the sales tax based on the projects that were listed. This one is also done, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but this one's done the same way in that the board set the budgets and set the timelines, and we've moved forward with those, and they, things changed and moved around, just like this one is in the process of doing too. So if you think the original MAPS vote was successful and helped Oklahoma City, I would encourage you to keep optimistic about the fact that this MAPS vote and these projects are going to continue to make Oklahoma City successful. And to keep arguing that one specific project or another was either favorable or not favorable just does a disservice to people that voted the entire project and the entire package. And I've been hesitant to bring that up, because it just belabors their argument sometimes, but I just feel that when we talk about the citizens don't like it. Well, the majority of the citizens that voted liked the package, and they passed it, and we need to do everything we can as a council to build those things and do them right, just like we did the first one.
Can I just make a follow-up comment on that? One of the things I didn't want to point out in the last discussion, because I didn't want it to look like I was trying to dissuade the discussion one way, but the fact is that there were no dollar amounts associated with the projects that were in with the council passed or that were on the ballot. Yes, there was some campaign material that put that out. There were some estimates put there, but they weren't there. But in MAPS I, there were all kinds of changes. In each project, the dollar amounts changed several times through the project, and the locations changed. The arena isn't where it was started out to be, the ballpark isn't where it started out to be, my gosh, the library changed, I don't know how many times before it ended up on the side where it's at. And MAPS for kids, we had a major, we stopped in midstream and reallocated the funds and changed that whole project. We still did modifications to all 77 schools we started out to do. But the level of those and what we added on to some schools and what we, you know, that all changed. We still did modifications to all 77 schools we started out to do. But the level of those and what we added on to some schools and what we, you know, that all changed about halfway through. Why did it change? Because there were changes in the demographics of the Oklahoma City School District. There was growth in this area and not in this area. It only made sense to make those changes because it accommodated the changes in the demographics. And I'm pretty sure that there will be changes in MAPS 3 before we get, get to the very end of it. And I really appreciate councils that I've talked to, I think all of you in, in so many weeks, your professional, respectful, non-emotional discussion on this issue. You were all, in my opinion, looking to move the city forward in what you thought was the best way to move the city forward. So thank you for that.
Ed?
I agree with what Jim said on that. I would like to invite everyone to, I think, an important community meeting next Tuesday night. It's from 6:30 to 8:30. It's at the Marriott Hotel on Northwest Expressway, right across from Baptist. For those that were, were at the event last year at the Marriott, about a year ago, it would be same format, same place, same time. It is about the concept of sprawl. That's an issue that affects cities across the country and that many, many cities are grappling with. But Oklahoma City has a unique version, and it's really only Oklahoma City that tries, is virtually alone in trying to provide city services to such a large geographic area with no geographic barriers. You might have Jacksonville, Florida, but they have enormous tracts with wetlands and stuff that you can't develop on. So Oklahoma City is virtually alone, so we're not going to have empirical data to go out and try and guide us. And that's why having discussions and having maximum public involvement is so important. And I just, I really encourage you to come and, and listen to the discussion that we'll have, someone from every, every city department, and, because it's impacting every city department. There are lots of groups that have interests, real estate developers, environmentalists, those who are concerned with, with issues like Agenda 21 from the United Nations, on and on and on. But ultimately, it's a taxpayer issue because it's the taxpayer and our children who are going to be responsible for the costs incurred by sprawl. And again, because it's, the city runs almost entirely by sales tax, we're virtually all responsible. So again, that's Tuesday night, September 6th, at the Marriott, across from Baptist on Northwest Expressway, 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Thank you.
I'd just like to encourage all the neighbors who are members of neighborhood associations
to contact your neighborhood association. Coming up on September 10th, and then again on the 13th, our National Neighborhood Night Out. Great time for all the neighbors to get together, show their support, make plans to move Oklahoma City forward. The original MAPS passed 52 to 48. This one passed 54 to 46. It's very difficult today to find those folks who are against the original MAPS because it has moved Oklahoma City forward, and I think MAPS 3 will do the same thing. And let's get on the team and move it forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
I had the opportunity Saturday night to attend the Best in Blue concert out at Rose State, which was a production by the Air Force Band. I was a guest of the general along with 2,000 other of his closest friends, and it was a really, really moving concert. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the Fourth of July at the end of August. It was a very talented group of young people, all Air Force people. It was very, very good. Saw a lot of people out there from all over the metro area. It was absolutely a wonderful performance. It was just really nice.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, the South Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce hosted an event with Cleveland County Commissioner Rod Cleveland speaking, and I just reminded me, I need to, want to extend our thanks from the city for their efforts, that being Cleveland County, in working with us on the paving of 149th Street, as well as Cleveland County and the developer down on 164th Street completed the paving between Western and Pennsylvania Avenue. We are looking forward to working closely with Cleveland County, which really takes up almost 80% of the area of Ward 5 is, is within Cleveland County. So they're a very important partner to the city's success in far South Oklahoma City. Thank you. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, we had a number of citizens over the weekend, I think, very disappointed that an event that was scheduled to take place on Friday evening at Ethan Hudson, kind of a downtown food festival, didn't occur according to plan. And I just wanted to let everybody know that city staff is working hard to kind of pull together all the facts that occurred. It's very important to, to point out that paramount in our decisions are public health and safety. And, you know, that is the, the key ingredient that has to sort of override everything else that we do. Our permitting process, I think, as we learned a little bit today with this new ordinance with regard to 3.2, our permitting process can be a little bit complicated. City manager and I are working together to try to make sure that the process that, that people go through is customer-friendly and is helpful and is educational. I think these are the kinds of events that we really want to encourage in our city. It was, it looked to be, you know, the kind of thing that we really want to do, but it requires a special event license. I know that city staff is, is trying to figure out how to make this work, but I want to just assure everybody that we are looking at our own processes and how to make this kind of thing easy for citizens to participate in.
Skip?
Yes. And to tailgate on what Councilman Salius stated, you know, I, I received some calls as a result of this unfortunate event, the situation that happened at the event Friday night. And a lot of people called me, and they wanted to know had the same thing happened in some areas where I represent. And I have made complaints in reference to some, some complaints from citizens as it relates to some outdoor activities, that it seemed like that we just turned our head and said, "Well, let it be." I would just ask that if, if the county, the city, in reference to these outdoor events and in reference to the permit requirements, if you're going to enforce this, let's be fair across the city with the enforcement. If your target was South Oklahoma City, why was your target just South Oklahoma City? But then you deviated because you saw an article in the newspaper and decided, "Oh, we'll just hit them before we even go to South." It just seemed like that it was such a, a, well, it seemed like they just singled out an area without even having a complaint. And when we, I have citizens that call in all times and say, "Well, it's all complaint-driven. We're not just going out proactively, you know, inspecting and doing anything. We have to get a complaint." And then I saw in the paper, what they called a complaint was nothing more than saying that they read it in the newspaper. And you have, you know, we know that this, this whole issue of, of mobile eating and, and retail, I'm gonna say, as far as, you know, the mobile trucks with, with food is becoming very popular. You can go down, on, any day in front of the courthouse, and you see two or three trucks. But I wonder how many times have they been down there to check them to see whether or not they're in compliance with anything? And, and I just think that, you know, if this is going to be, you know, a way we're going to treat, you know, businesses, let's treat them all the same. I, I just think this was, I think this was an overreaching in reference to one particular area that was unfair, whether or not there was some violations or not. You know, I'm not saying anything about turning your head against, about the violations, but, you know, if you can't get two people to go out to one part of northeast Oklahoma City and address some issues because you say, "Well, that's after hours, and we can't, we don't have, you know, overtime workers to do this," then how do you get all these people, you know, wound up to do this on, on Friday night at one location? And I, I just think this needs to be something that we need to either do a task force study to look at the number of, of businesses that, and, and what the permit requirement is, and how are you going to, 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 to enforce it? You know, I think there has to be a balance as it relates to the enforcement of these type of outdoor food sales. And, you know, I don't have anything against anyone who has a business doing that, but I just think that if you're going to have permits, if you're going to have requirements, then let's make it, you know, a balance across the city. I, I just didn't like the fact, when I saw the article said, "Well, our intention was we were going to the south side." And I got to thinking, what's so important about the south side? You know? Because a lot of Hispanics live on the south side. Was that the intent? They sell a lot of tacos, they have a lot of outdoor food stands. Was, was that the intent? And then because you saw an article in the newspaper about a grand opening of an event, you decided, "Well, you know, let's just hijack them." And I, I just think that was just, you know, a wrong way to, to address the issue when, when you had these same issues going all over Oklahoma City before this, before this organization announced their, their event, you know? And the other issue I wanted to, to bring out, and, and sometimes we get information from, from some citizens who come to speak, and I think we kind of, you know, just overlook it. I was kind of taken when one of the citizens said that the bus line, as far as the timing of our, of our bus routes, I would like to know if we could, could look at the timing in the morning. True enough, there's a lot of people that want you at work at 7:30. And, and if that's the case with a lot of these individuals who, who work through temporary agencies, and the time that they want to crew theirs is at 7:30 in the morning, then maybe we need to look at the, the timing of some of our bus routes to see if we could, you know, change from, from 7:00 AM to maybe 6:00.
We'd be happy to look at that and get a report back to you and the cost associate there, too.
All right. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. I obviously wasn't terribly pleased with where the MAPS vote went, but it did nothing to diminish my support for the MAPS project. I think we've got a good bunch of projects. I think we were in a position, enviable position today of not being able to make a truly wrong decision. We had several degrees of riots in there. Second thing is, I commend Councilman Shadid on his convening the meeting. I wish he had chosen a more neutral title, an urban sprawl. I think that has a negative connotation, and it sort of decides what the answer is already, but that's another thing. The main thing I'd like to ask is for the city manager to do a little study on the possibility of the city council going to every other meetings on a full-time basis. I know that we've done it in summertime, and we've accounted an occasional issue that was a little bit dicey, maybe because we're going available all the time, but I think you might want to review our processes, see if there's something we could do to accommodate that. I visualize some savings in the operation that way, staff time. There's a possibility, I think, as we go forward, if we go forward with something like that, that perhaps the agendas could be delivered further in advance of the meetings, or at least maybe some of the topics that require more review, contracts and whatnot. So we have some additional time to look at them before the meetings. I think as part of the study, we might want to look also at, at the advisability of occasionally meeting in the evenings. We've had a suggestion that 6 o'clock meetings, the public would might be more willing to show up or have more accessibility. I think that's important. It's something we need to look at because there are some costs and some negatives involved with that. To the extent that we can, I'd like to see if we can investigate the possibility of some of these unforeseen consequences as we go forward. I think sometimes we, as a council, jump at things without having a full understanding of what the implications are. And I, I don't think there's any big hurry on this study, but I think it's something we ought to get started on.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment about sprawl? I don't think that sprawl in itself has a positive or negative connotation, and, and in fact, there are, even though our mind likes to put things in black and white, good and evil, it just never works out that way, and there are advantages to sprawl, and I think Jim will probably reference those. There are advantages and disadvantages, and both of those will be talked about next Tuesday. And I agree with you that judgmental and inflammatory terms like, one would be smart growth, which I can't stand, and I don't think we should ever use, because what's the opposite of that? And that, that would be an example of something inflammatory and should be avoided. Sprawl, I think, is just, is...
What would be urban growth patterns? I, I think it's more neutral, but that's just, that's one of those things we might discuss sometime, and like, Councilman Shadid. Thank you.
All right. That concludes items from council under the city manager reports.
Mr. Mayor, over the last few years, we have done citizen surveys. We've done, actually, five, this is our fifth year we've done that. We've had a couple of years off. We did not do a survey last year. It was a, it was a budget cut issue at the time we were, we were making other cuts. And so as the economy has, has come back a little bit, we did do a citizen survey this year, and it's very similar to the format we've used in previous years. And we'll have today Chris Tatham with us, who's going to present the citizen survey findings to us. Chris?
Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be back. What I'm going to do today is kind of walk through the high-level findings. Obviously, there's a lot of data here, but I want to kind of make sure that you get the main messages that we think you should take away from the survey. For those of you who are new to the council and not familiar with our firm, our firm specializes in working with local governments to get input from residents to make better decisions. The reality is, is typically at meetings like this, you only hear from a small segment of the public, so sometimes it's hard to know whether or not you're really doing things right or not. So we use the information that we gather from the city of Oklahoma, and we also assess it in the context of many other communities. We do similar surveys for 12 of the 20 largest U.S. cities and 11 of the 20 largest U.S. counties. So as I go through the presentation, I'm going to talk about some of the findings in context of what we've seen help in elsewhere, and that's the basis for those comments. And here's just a few of the communities. I'm not going to read the list, it's in the report, but we also provide some head-to-head comparisons for you. We do almost every major city, for example, along the I-35 corridor. So I go to San Antonio and Austin and Kansas City and Des Moines. And so, again, I'm going to be talking a lot about context today. As far as the agenda, I'm just briefly going to recap the purpose. I think most of you are familiar with that. I'll walk through the general methodology, which is exactly the same way we've done in previous years, and then talk about the major findings. I've highlighted a few of those, which I've called your headline story, which I think are the major takeaways from this year's survey. As far as the purpose of the survey, fundamentally, it's to provide you some feedback about how well you're delivering services. Expectations change from one period to the next, and being aware of how expectations are changing is critical to meeting the needs of the community. In addition, it helps you assess what the priorities should be with regard to resident expectations, and those priorities aren't always aligned with what you know the priorities to be. So oftentimes, you need to use the results of the survey to help guide the education because residents might think X is a priority, but to get to X, you might need to do Y. So there's a lot of things you can use with a survey to impact the awareness and, and priorities of the community through public information. With regard to the methodology of the survey, as I said, it was administered the same way this year as we've done in previous years. Our goal was to get 1,200 completed surveys citywide. We actually had 1,368 households participate. The results are not perfect, but if you did the survey the same way, 95 times out of 100, you'd expect to see the same results, within about plus or minus 2.6%. So if you see changes from the last survey of 3% or more, they're probably statistically significant. We checked the composition of this year's survey against recent census estimates, and they tend to be fairly close. They're also close to the data we saw in previous years. So again, changes in the results are more a function of changing expectations and changing service levels than differences in the sample composition. We also do GIS mapping, and I don't have a lot of them in today's presentation, but if you actually want to see how people rate different services in different parts of the city, there's an entire section that has maps that show how people in different areas rate different services. I ask you to have caution in interpreting those maps, though, because some areas only have a few respondents, so that data should be compared with other data sources to make sure it's interpreted correctly. With that said, this map just shows the general relocation of respondents. As you can see, basically, people live, or the red dots are located where people are. Areas with higher density have more dots, areas with lower density development have fewer dots. But all in all, this distribution mirrors the recent census maps that show the density of the city. So we felt real good about the demographic composition and the geographic composition of the survey. With that said, here's really the five kind of major takeaways, at least from my perspective. There's obviously a lot of other information here, but the first one is overall satisfaction with city services, and the city of Oklahoma City is significantly higher than most other large cities in the United States. You're doing some things definitely right. Residents definitely have a very positive perception of the city and the direction the city is headed. I'm going to show you some numbers that really show how intense the favorable opinions about the direction of the city are, particularly in this year's survey. Although satisfaction remains high compared to the last surveys, we have seen some decreased levels of satisfaction. I think what's happened is in 2009, when we did your last survey, the impact of the recent recession did not quite hit this city yet. And as a result, we've seen most cities across the country see lower satisfaction levels when compared to 2008 and 2009, and I think you're seeing a similar issue going on here now. And finally, the number one priority is clearly maintenance. You're going to see that, at least from a resident perspective, and I'll show you why in just a little bit. So with those headlines, here's how we kind of got there. I'm going to kind of start off with perceptions of the city, and then walk through some of the major findings in each area of service. The perception questions I consider to be kind of those strategic indicators about the health of a community. If you rate high in these areas, people are going to probably want to continue to stay here, you're going to be able to attract people here, and that's a long... here, you're going to be able to attract people here, and that's a long-term, it's a good thing for the long-term health of the city. You can see most of the areas on here had very positive perceptions, feelings of safety, quality of downtown, overall how well the city is planning for growth. And you might look at those numbers and say, well, are those good or bad? How do we sort of stack up? So when you compare these numbers to the numbers for other large cities around the country that have populations of 250,000 or more, that's what's shown in this chart. The blue bars are for the results for Oklahoma City, the yellow bars are the results for the national average, and you'll see that you're above average in just about everywhere, little bit below on quality of life, but it's not substantially different, but you are really setting the standard when it comes to overall quality of city services. You see, that's at the bottom there. 64% or over, nearly two out of three residents give positive ratings for how well you deliver services overall. Most large cities, fewer than half or just 46% give positive ratings. In addition, I think the perceptions of how well you're planning for growth, you're doing a lot of innovating and good things, clearly that's resonating strongly with the public because your rating is nearly double the national average for other large cities at 66% compared to 35%. So you're definitely doing some great things in that regard. In addition, we looked at the overall trends in satisfaction. You can see that they have decreased slightly from 2009. The overall rating at 64% still substantially higher than most other cities, but I think it's important that you be aware that you've seen some decreases. You hope that doesn't continue. The immediate cause is likely to be recessions and things like that, because I've seen that elsewhere, but if it continues, that would potentially be a concern in the future. With regard to the overall satisfaction based on where people live, what you see on this map is we've shaded the mean rating or the mean satisfaction rating by zip code throughout the city, and what's great about this is most of the city is almost the same color. In other words, you'll see that most people are satisfied regardless of their, where they live. You'll see some of the low-density developments as you get to the east are a little bit lower levels of satisfaction, but again, those areas only have a low number of respondents, so the data should be interpreted in the context of other information as well. Key point here, though, is you're doing a great job generally throughout the city delivering high-quality services. In addition, one of the things that we wanted to find out is whether or not people think you're moving in the right direction, and we asked people how to rate the city as a place to live, work, and raise children, and this chart again shows the positive ratings, excellent and good are in blue, negative ratings are in red, and you can see clearly there's very little concerns about the city with regard to each of these items that were rated. The one I want to highlight, though, is the one that I put the little arrow to this is the city's moving in the right direction, because for every person that thinks the city isn't moving in the right direction, or that 8%, there's almost 10 that see the city is at 76%, just a tremendous ratio. In addition, what impressed me even more about this chart is the percentage that are giving excellent ratings. Four out of 10 people, 38%, are giving you the highest rating possible, which shows that you have a lot of people who really feel good about where the city is going. In fact, there's more people giving the excellent ratings for that item than any of the other areas that were rated on the survey. So you're really to be commended in these difficult times because in most communities, people don't feel their local governments and state governments and the federal governments are moving in the right direction. So these ratios really impressed me when I was reviewing the results of the survey. Next thing I want to share with you are just some of the major findings. One of the things that we do is we ask people to kind of rate each of the major services that are delivered by the city, and then we actually get into some of the details about each of those services. So this first list here is kind of the overall ratings, how people rate fire, ambulance, police service, water utility services and so forth, and you can see most of the services generally have high ratings. The one that clearly stands out, though, as a concern is your maintenance of your city streets, where you have 50% or half the people are not just giving average ratings or neutral ratings, they're actually giving negative ratings. And when you compare that to the positive ratings of just 24%, you actually have over a two to one ratio giving negative to positive. Public transit system also has some concerns, and you can see there's some concerns about traffic flow and code enforcement, that those aren't unusual for a city of this size. When we see how these ratings kind of stack up on the next page, you can see some of the things that I really want to highlight as strengths. Customer service here towers over other communities. You have an 18-point advantage at 61 to 43. So if other cities want to learn how to do customer service, they should come check out Oklahoma City. With regard to your communication, you're at 53% compared to 40%, so you're doing something right. Again, communication isn't typically rated really high, but you're doing it a lot better than most other large cities. Even traffic flow, which had higher levels of dissatisfaction and code enforcement, right above the national average, but you can see in some of the other areas where you have some of the weaknesses, parks and recreation, I'm going to show you in a little bit, there's not a lot of dissatisfaction with parks and recreation, but these results are based on the combined positives. And here in Oklahoma City, you tend to have more neutral ratings, which isn't necessarily a problem, but people don't feel as good about their parks as in some of their other areas. And your water utility services, I think some of your issues related to fee changes have impacted that because your overall ratings for the water service itself are very, very high. The one item, though, that has the most significant gap is maintenance of streets, and you can see you trail 13 percentage points behind the national average for other communities. And when we ask people what they thought their top priority is, not probably a real surprise, given the concerns, maintenance of streets actually stood out by far as the top issue. In fact, more people picked it as a first choice than any of the other items, top three choices combined. So clearly, how you address that, putting that into your communication, letting people know what you're doing in that area, will get you a lot of mileage. Even if you don't have as many dollars to invest, it's important that the community believe that the city has a plan to address that as you move forward. And one of the things that we do is to kind of put this into an equation is often not as easy as this. Sometimes the top priority isn't the lowest-rated area, but we have an index that we call the important satisfaction rating that essentially takes a look at how important a service is to residents and then the overall level of satisfaction. So as the importance goes to zero, this value goes to zero. If the satisfaction goes to 100, it also goes to zero. On the other hand, if you have low levels of satisfaction and high importance, this value moves toward the value of 1. And you can see essentially, this shows you what your marginal return on investments would be in different areas, and you can see maintenance of streets at .50 is clearly the highest area. Transit is a distant second with regard to the analysis that we conducted on the survey. But investments in streets will clearly have some significant benefits over the next couple of years. In addition, if you're more of a, this is for, I guess, the left-brain learners, those people who like visual things. We put the same information on a chart like this, and we essentially plot from left to right the importance, and from bottom to top is the satisfaction. The items that you get concerned about are the ones in the bottom right, and you can see the quality of public transit and maintenance of city streets are the ones that are furthest in that regard. This doesn't mean that you don't continue to fund ambulance service and fire service, but if you're going to make a lot of big deals about your investments in those areas, they're not going to yield the same returns on satisfaction because satisfaction levels are already very high. So it doesn't mean you don't do certain things, but your ability to get points toward people's perceptions of the city favorably with regard to satisfaction is greatly enhanced by investments and communication points targeted at the bottom-right quadrant. With that, kind of the overall findings, we also broke the results of the survey down into some specific areas, one of which is public safety. We looked at things like police services in neighborhoods, enforcement of local traffic laws, both generally had fairly high ratings. We also looked at issues about people's perceptions of safety in different parts of the city. And one of the things that you'll notice on this chart is there are a significant number of people who are dissatisfied, or I should say, feel unsafe in city parks. In fact, 1 in 3 people indicated they did not feel safe in city parks. 30% indicated that you didn't feel safe in city at night. Overall, your public safety ratings are among the very highest of all cities, but I think this is perhaps an emerging issue that you should be aware of so that your overall public safety rating doesn't go down in the future. And we see how you stack up in these areas to other communities. You see Oklahoma City was the second-highest rated when it comes to public safety for your overall rating, but when it comes to some of the ratings specifically related to feelings of safety in parks and safety in neighborhoods at night, you can see you trail the average. There's a significant gap when it comes to feelings of safety in the parks. So I think as you're moving forward, that's an issue to emphasize. Maybe it's with communication, it may be with investments, but clearly residents here are more concerned about it than residents in other communities. All in all, though, your public safety areas rate very well compared to most other large cities. When it comes to your utilities, we asked people to rate their satisfaction with various utilities, and what's great about this chart is almost everything's in high blue. You look at this chart, speed of service, customer service, recycling, wastewater, water service, residential trash collection, bulky item pickup, all rate extremely high, and there's a real strong intensity of people giving very satisfied ratings. In other words, you have more than 25% of the customers in all areas giving you a 5 on a 5-point scale, suggesting you're doing something right. And this is again why I think some of the issues we saw with the lower ratings of overall for the overall quality was a little lower and more a function of price costs than actual service delivery. And when you see how you stack up to other communities, you see you're really setting the standard for residential trash and bulky item pickup. I'm sorry, I flagged the bulky item pickup because you're one of the very best in the nation at that, but you're also significantly above when it comes to residential trash service. So in a couple of the areas that really make a big difference in the way residents view the city from a customer service, the way you interact with them on a regular basis, you're really doing a great job in setting the standard. On your parks and recreation areas, this is what I was mentioning before. There's not a lot of dissatisfaction with parks in the city, but you see there's a lot of people who give kind of neutral ratings, and this isn't an uninformed rating. People who don't know, we exclude those. People don't actually say I'm neutral about parks. They rate things on a 1 to 5 scale, so this is a 3. This typically indicates somebody hasn't had a real good experience, nor they had a really bad experience, but they're informed. And one of the things that I see looking at your survey results is there's not a lot of people who feel really intensely positive about the parks. You see, all of the items rated had fewer than 20% of the people giving very satisfied. So I think there's significant opportunities here, probably relative low amounts of dollars to cause people to feel better about the park system, and the reason I say that is people who give ratings of 3 oftentimes are the most easily affected by communication, education, and small investments. Doing little things causes somebody who's a 3 to suddenly be a 4, and you don't have a lot of dissatisfaction, so there's not a lot of negative hurdles to overcome. And when you see how you stack up to other communities, you see a couple of the areas about average, the overall quality of park facilities and athletic fields, though, do rate behind other large cities, with the athletic fields being about 15 points behind the national average. When it comes to opportunities for investment, walking and biking trails, you can see is the top of the list, pools and continued maintenance of parks kind of round out the top 3, and you can see walking and biking trails got to the top of the list because it in some ways has some of the most dissatisfaction overall among the areas that were rated on the survey. The next area we looked at was code enforcement, and you can see code enforcement kind of has a core group that's dissatisfied, but generally you see the percentage of people giving positive ratings compared to negatives is generally very favorable. A lot of folks, again, in the middle that are giving neutral ratings, which through communication and education about what you're doing, do suggest you have opportunities to cause those people to feel better about code enforcement services. And when you see how you stack, or I guess the top priorities within code enforcement, we didn't have any comparisons here, you can see that the overall enforcement of mowing and grass on private property is the top issue, cleanup of litter and debris is the second issue, followed by the exterior upkeep of residential property. Those are, since you have several items that really rank relatively high in this category. One of the last areas I want to kind of emphasize is maintenance. I like to start good and kind of, kind of go into some of the areas that really have the most opportunity, and you can see here when you look at the maintenance issues, there's really not a lot of major concerns in general, except with the very last item. You see condition of major streets is clearly the driving factor for concerns. You can see conditions of streets and neighborhoods have 31% of residents giving dissatisfied ratings, but when we actually compare the city of Oklahoma City to other cities, you actually have better-than-average ratings for your neighborhood streets, but significantly lower ratings for the maintenance of major streets. So that's, unfortunately, major streets are the most costly to take care of, but that's clearly where some of the concerns exist. There are also some concerns about the cleanliness of city streets and public areas as well. And when you see how you stack up to your benchmarking pool, unlike public safety, where you're right at the very top of the list, you can see you're near the bottom when it comes to overall perceptions of maintenance at 24% compared to an average of 37%. And it's not a surprise that condition of major streets is by far the top priority in the important satisfaction analysis we did. Couple other highlights are with your communication. Overall, what really strikes me with your communication is almost a complete absence of concerns about it. Very, very low levels of dissatisfaction. Many large cities have 20, 30, 40% of their residents not happy with how well the city communicates. I think that's one of the reasons your overall ratings are much higher than the national average. You get good ratings for your website, for programming on City Channel 20, and you can see even your perceptions of the city's website as a way to transact business with the city generally get pretty positive ratings. Your customer service, I said perhaps the best for last. You might remember your customer service ratings are setting the standard for the nation, and I think one of the reasons for is the intense positive reaction that residents have had to their experiences with city employees. You can see the overall high percentage of people who are giving very satisfied ratings, and you do that, remember, these are the same people who, there's hardly any of them giving positive ratings in some of the other areas, not a lot of negativity, they're much more opinionated, but in this case, it's not a surprise that you do have a core group of people who are dissatisfied with certain elements. But this suggests to me that your employees are doing something right in the way they interact with customers, otherwise you wouldn't have an overall customer satisfaction rating that's substantially higher than the average for other large cities. So just to summarize, these are essentially the same key points I showed you earlier. I think the city of Oklahoma City should be very proud of the fact that you're really setting the standard for overall delivery of city services. You're rating significantly higher than the national average. We've seen some areas decrease since the last survey. I think a lot of that probably is due to recession and other factors that we've seen ratings, caused other community ratings to go down the last couple of years, but to move forward in a positive way, having plans to address some of the concerns, particularly maintenance of streets, I think will be critical to make sure you continue to gain the confidence in the, these high ratings from the public in the future. So, Mayor, with that, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but...
How many, how many surveys do you send out? How many do you mail out?
For this sample, I think we had 2,500 households were selected, so a little over half, I think, participated. It may have been 3,000, I don't, but it was between 2,500 and 3,000.
And then how, so you, you study the census and you try, and you, and you try and emulate that or math?
What we do is we, basically, we take a look at the number of households that are currently in the city, and we then select a random sample of those. In this case, it was probably 2,500 to 3,000. Those households are then...
How do you find those 3,000?
We select them at random. Imagine that there's every household, let's say there's 200,000, 50,000 households in the city, I'm just pulling that number out. Every number, household, we give a unique record between 1 and 250,000. We then generate a random list of numbers, 3,000 unique numbers between 1 and 250,000. Those households are then the ones that are selected.
Do you know the ethnicity of those households?
We don't until after we do the survey, but what we do is if we get a good distribution when we're all done, the ethnicity of our sample should mirror the ethnicity of the city, and that's one of the things that we take a look at. In this case, it generally does.
So you, okay, so after the fact, you look at those 1,368 that came back and you compare that to the census?
Exactly.
What, what was the cost of this study for the city?
Probably around 34, 35,000, 32,000.
Would it be possible to do, to do this in a, and Jim, I guess I would ask you, just, I mean, would, could you do this in an automated fashion over the phone?
If you don't really care that people participate, you can do it on the internet for a lot less. The real key thing here is this is a 15-minute survey. You're calling people who really aren't typically engaged with local government, and you're trying to make sure that this tool gives you a perception of those people you don't always hear from. If you do automated surveys, which are now available, where you call people, push this to participate in the survey, what'll happen is they'll typically just hang up. The people who you'll end up hearing from are likely to be the same people who always turn out to these events. I've worked with a lot of communities, and I do other types of surveys that are much lower cost, but what happens is the people who will participate will tend to mirror the people you hear from anywhere anyway, so as a result, a survey of this has very little value.
I'm not, I'm not, I mean, you're only getting 50% of the people to participate that you send out mailings to, so I'm not sure, but that wouldn't apply to that also. When you, when you call them by follow-up on phone, what are you, what are you, how much time are you spending with them? What are you asking?
We do several things. First, we do an automated message from the mayor to let people know that it's important. We then send them a survey in the mail. We then call them by phone. If they're not able to do it at that time, or if they haven't already participated, we then schedule a time to call them back. We then call them back at that time. And the 50 percent participation rate, just to let you know, is extremely good. In fact, I suspect it's a little higher than your local voter election turnout. And on most surveys, typically, you're lucky to have 5 to 10 percent of most people in typical surveys to respond to a survey like this. So I think your community is extremely engaged. And compared to other community surveys, I do, the level of response here is much, much higher.
I just, I think, I mean, a robo-call from the mayor would cost $150. I don't, is, is $35,000 to the taxpayer, I mean, is that a, you think that's reasonable? Do, are you familiar with other, do we get bids on?
We go through a selection process, an open selection process, where we have people submit proposals to us. And based upon the qualifications of those people, we negotiate a fee. And I think this is a pretty good value for $35,000.
Okay.
To have the information of this magnitude and the amount of sampling that was done.
Okay.
And the ability to compare it on a national basis under similar results, I think, is very, very valuable. I mean, to know how we rank up against those other cities. So I believe it's value.
Okay.
But that's, that's a policy issue of council to decide.
That's what I want to know. Thanks. Comments or questions?
I had a...
Yeah, Gary.
The, when you do all the comparisons to other major cities, you use the above 250,000. Is that a, is that a standard break or a natural break? I mean, is there, and is there only one break, or can you do above 500,000?
We do do 500,000 for some cities. There's not a substantially different, difference in the results. We've typically done 250,000 above for you, so we've stayed with that. Some cities like San Francisco and Dallas and Boston, some of the other communities we work with, they use a 200, or 500,000 level. So we can do both, but those are our breaks internally, so, so we can pull out the data. We either have it broken down by 500,000, 250,000, 100,000, 50,000, and then 20,000.
Would you suspect if you moved up to 500,000, that we would do better or worse?
Yeah, you'd probably, you would actually fare a little better. In fact, when you get to 500,000, the overall results drop about another 5 to 6 percent. So if we did that, it would make you look even better than you do in this report.
That's kind of a question I had, because if you do, if you do 250,000 cities, and they're typically geographically smaller than we are, they're gonna, they would do better, I think, in some areas, whether it be parks, or streets, or anything else, depending on what they had to maintain versus what we did. So I was just curious, if you moved us up closer to something that's more comparable to us, would you think it'd be, we'd do, we'd fare better or worse?
The only area that really lags significantly, and I guess I pulled this up, is in maintenance. And you might, I didn't spend a lot of time on the maintenance chart, but you might have seen yourselves there at 24 percent. The average was 37 percent in other large cities. Most of the cities in that chart are above 500,000.
Okay, alright.
So the overall rating at 250,000, when people look at city services across the board, you're at 64 percent compared to the average of 46. So you're doing great in most areas. The maintenance issue is the one area where there's really the significant gap. And when you look at the result, I think it was right here, you can see here's several other cities that are on the list. And we can pull out things like San Antonio, you know, large geographic city, they have 45 percent. Dallas, not quite as big, but 35 percent. You can see Indianapolis at 32 percent. Austin, 46 percent. I don't have San Francisco or Boston, but they're also higher than you are. So at the end of the day, you're 24 percent, even when you just pick it out to a handful of other large cities of over 500,000. The comparisons don't help you a lot. It's still, you're rating near the lowest area. So that's why this is, of all the issues in your survey, the area we've identified is the biggest concern.
Chris, the benchmarking communities, did your company perform the same with all these other cities?
Exactly. So it's essentially, it's an identical survey, so that way you can, the comparisons aren't kind of derived from different scales. We've administered the same survey in these other places that we administered here.
Thank you. Do you have your data broken down by ward or area of the survey?
It can be. And so what we've done is we've geocoded the home address of each of the respondents to the survey, so the data can be broken down, really at any level of geography that you like. It can be broken down by ward level, it can be broken down into planning areas. So you might remember this map at the very beginning. At the end of the day, if you wanted to actually see the data for different areas of the city, you're able to do that.
Alright. We appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
It's great to be here. Thank you.
Other city manager reports?
We have a city, a sales tax report on. It was a very strong month for August, in interest of time, I'll answer any questions council may have.
Still, the sales tax still outpacing expectation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any reason for that?
It's unexplainably good, so...
I thought it was... I believe it's because we have a strong mayor and council.
I think it's not a topic to yell at all.
That hasn't been reflected yet.
Alright, we have citizens to be heard. Katie LeHugh? Do the three of you want to come up together? It looks like you've come in together. We have, we will need each of you to give us your name and address for the record. That might be a good place to start.
I'm Katie LeHugh, this is 515 Northwest 27th Street.
Okay.
I'm Meredith Scott, and I'm 524 Northwest 30th.
Okay.
Lynn Goldberg, 3704 Northwest 52nd Street.
Okay. Thanks for your patience.
No problem. Okay.
Well, I just wanted to come and voice my support for the trails, walking paths, and the park as part of MAPS 3. We're all public health students. I'm recently graduated, and it's really an important issue to me and to the rest of the citizens of Oklahoma City, especially when you think about our young children and our kids. They need a place to be outside and be physically active. And when you look at the numbers, there, our youth are not engaging in the recommended levels of physical activity, 60 minutes every day. So this would be a way for them to be out, be in a recreational area with their friends, engage in creative play, which is really important for our young kids, our zero to five. And I would just really encourage your support for this, because there is a list of negative health outcomes when we don't have physical activity. I'll just run through a few of them in case you're not familiar. Attention deficit disorder, cancer, depression, diabetes, obesity, heart disease, stress. All of these things culminate throughout our lifespan. So when we think about Governor Fallon and her plea for more college graduates, we need to have healthier students to go to college, and these people in turn are our future workforce. So when we have all this discussion about a convention center, Oklahoma City citizens are the ones that are going to be staffing that and making it function. And so we want those people to be healthy, we want them to have less sick days, we want them to be more productive, and giving Oklahoma City residents the opportunity to be physically active in a way that's free, where they don't have to buy a gym membership, is a great idea, and I fully support that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Katie.
Hello, I'm Meredith. And I was calling, or I was coming up here. I'm working on my master's right now, Master of Science in Health Promotion, and I am looking at the barriers and perceptions of physical activity among low-income women. Well, I can't even address the individual idea of why they don't do it for themselves if they don't even have the environment to be active in. And I have talked to these through qualitative research studies as well as quantitative surveys. And they really just, the environment is a big, big factor. I know that whenever I voted for MAPS, I was truly surprised and excited to see the parks and trails as a priority. That's why I voted for MAPS. The convention center was definitely on my least priority list. But, and I know several of my people I talk to through Sisters of Motion, as well as other organizations that promote physical activity among this population, they are all about this opportunity for free exercise. So, thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
I'm Katie, I'm also getting my Master of Science in Health Promotion, and also my bachelor's is also in health promotion. So physical activity has always been in my life, and it's a passion of mine. Sorry, I'm really nervous. I do support the running trails, as I am a runner myself. And I know we all complain about how Oklahoma is one of the most obese states, and Oklahoma City was actually put in the top five most sedentary states, with Tulsa being number six right behind us. So having that free availability to exercise, or accessibility, which is the main thing of being physically active, is being able to access free places, I guess you could say. And so having that, it would also help with the Oklahoma City Million Pound Challenge. And I check that site out all the time. There's only 45,000 members out of the 500-plus thousand people in the city. So having that accessibility will tell, or, I'm sorry, will get people out there more, go to parks, hit the running trails, hit the bike paths, everything. And connecting, is it Lake Hefner to?
To Overholser, then to the, to the, to the River Trail.
That would also help with stuff as well. And I want to be a doing city, not just a complaining city. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Uh huh. Yes.
I would just have us think about, when we create this park, that it be a 24/7 tobacco-free park. That way, we have our kids in a tobacco-free environment, and we're modeling positive health behaviors for them. And you guys, as the leaders of Oklahoma City, can be the lead on that. This could be your moment to stand up and take charge. So, thank you.
Alright. Thanks, Lynn. Fannie Bates? Fannie, thanks for your patience.
No problem. I was very disappointed that nobody gave us a copy of the survey. There were five citizens who sat here for three hours and waited through this whole meeting, and I don't understand why we couldn't have been given a copy of the survey. The main thing I want to talk to you about is radiation.